You can say good morning. It is a good morning so far. Let's do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. It's October already. Wow. Adam CIO.
Supervisor Bone would like to pull item C7 for discussion.
That'd be great. Thank you very much. I'd entertain a move that we approve the consent calendar.
Second?
Without C7.
Exactly.
I was kind of figuring that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Let's have some public comment.
Good morning, Board. I'd like to bring your attention to item, I don't know, see what it is, but it's File 191428, and it's to ratify approval for the less seized option to extend term of the lease at the Courthouse Cafe. This item-
C10. C10 for everybody else, so.
Oh.
That's the number.
Thank you. This item came without auditor controller input, didn't pass through our routing system, so we just saw it today. I don't object at all to extending this lease. I think they're fantastic, but I would like to turn your attention to the source of funding. We, the Auditor's Office and our external auditors, have identified this trust fund as one that should be eliminated, and we have already proposed that the operating revenue of this lease income should be recorded in a budget unit and included in the budgetary process, as opposed to being kept in the separate trust fund. That is my only input for this item. I do think they're great, and I don't want them to not be upstairs, but I do have concerns about the trust fund being used to keep operating revenue.
I think this is the sixth or seventh lease I've, we've done with the cafe, and we've, so I will ask the CIO, have we been doing it wrong all these years?
Well, first of all, this is a public works item. However, we're happy to make any budget adjustments, and we, as we've stated in the past, we are working to close trust funds.
That's what I thought. Okay. Thank you.
I'm just pleased to see the auditor controlling, auditing and controlling to inform you of things, that's her job, and to let you know what Ts you have to dot and which Is you have to cross. I wish to make comment on C11. The topic here is the sheriff has a boat out at Woodley Island that it's had there since 2015 regarding the boating safety program. The cost for the county here to have that boat for one year is $3,030. It says payment of advanced monthly payments shall remain at all times of month-to-month tenancy, so they're paying for the whole year. Part of what I've been observing out there is a lack of dredging, and I think they have had to move a whole bunch of boats around to different slips, emergency boats, and I don't know whether our boat has priority out there, but I don't know if they're dredging today. This is, I think we have to the 15th to dredge. This is a great concern to me that safety boats or boats are not, are paying for dredging, and they're not getting this dredged. Now, a while back, the, some years ago, one of the directors was terminated out there, and the money that was set aside for dredging to keep this a safe harbor out there, all of a sudden disappeared, and it had to reappear now for dredging. And there's still some money out there. Some people say that still has disappeared that needs to reappear for dredging. So hopefully, the marina, the Harbor District will provide the services they're billing us for. Hopefully, the money will be used for the dredging purposes and not misappropriated, and all of a sudden, I guess they, everybody said, hey, we're balancing our budget now, everything's really good. Well, when you take money from one pot and kind of eliminate something that should have been earmarked and put it into your general fund, that's what happens out there. So hopefully, this will work out, and we'll get some dredging done, and we will get some consistency out there, so the people, the fishermen and the carotid and everybody else who has their boats out there won't be left up on the sand when they need to go out fishing or something because of lack of spending the money that was misappropriated. So look forward to dredging happening, and hopefully, the Harbor District will get their ducks in a row. We had a major discussion. Patrick Higgins slammed his fist down and said, "I'm not going to do this, I'm not going to..." Or Stephen Coleman was in the thing, and he said, "Well, we're gonna, you can't do that, we have to do this." You can't use the dredge that they bought. And so that's their biggest problem. In fact, they were corrected, they can't even use that same dredge statewide now, and they thought they were going to sell it. I don't know where they're going to sell it to, but again, this was $2 million we got from PG&E to buy this dredge, to keep this open for our sheriff and everybody out there, and hasn't, hasn't, not even one spoonful of material, as far as I can tell, probably will never be used, may not ever be able to be sold. That's just, that's kind of just, when you lose this kind of sums of money, it's really important to, you know, kind of follow up on things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again. I'm Lori Dengler, Emeritus Professor of Geology at Humboldt State University, and I'm commenting on C2. So thank you very much for continuing to support participation in the Great Shakeout. I estimate it's been, I've given presentations to you 19 times since our last really damaging earthquake, and we're moving up on the 10-year anniversary. It's really easy to become a firm believer in earthquake and tsunami preparedness afterwards, but that is too late. So now is your time to lead the county, lead all of us, as you really have been doing in the state and nationwide, as getting out in front of the curve, making sure that you personally have registered to participate in Shakeout, talking to all of your friends, all of the organizations. I'd like to see the whole Board of Supervisors listed as registrants in the Shakeout. This year, Humboldt County will be testing their emergency alert system. It's a really great time to find out if the system works for you personally, but it will only work for you if you've signed up in advance. So please continue to beat the drums, and when the next significant earthquake happens, we can say, "We did a whole lot better than if we hadn't taken the time and energy to make it our priority." So materials for everybody there, and thank you again.
Lori, I think I speak for the board, for the 19 presentations. We learned something new, and it's also, we were just discussing, it's been 10 years, and hopefully, everything we've prepared for that our kids and grandkids-
Yeah, yeah.
And we don't ever have to deal with it.
Right.
But your devotion to this, you know, after the fact of, you know, it's just your passion, and we appreciate it, I think, the board. And Supervisor Fennell has a proclamation for you. I think she'll read the highlights.
Yep. Yeah, and basically, I'm going to read it just to underline what you're saying, get that message out there, but you're asking us to be leaders. I consider you a leader, Lori, in so many ways. You've been leading in this field for a very long time. Whereas Humboldt County, its proximity to the Mendocino Triple Junction, Cascadia Subduction Zone, and major fault systems, both on and offshore, make it vulnerable to earthquakes and near-source tsunamis. And whereas in historic times, Humboldt County and the adjacent offshore area has been the single most sizily active region of California. And whereas since 1925, earthquakes have caused significant damage to structures in Humboldt County, with an average recurrence of five years, and the most recent damaging earthquake was in 2010. And whereas the Cascadia Subduction Zone lies beneath and adjacent to the Humboldt County coast and is capable of producing a very large magnitude earthquake, followed within minutes by a major tsunami earthquake shaking is the natural warning that a near tsunami may be on its way. Whereas earthquakes can occur at any time and with no warning, and whereas understanding what to do during strong ground shaking is fundamental to saving lives and an earthquake. And whereas county residents who live or work near the coast are encouraged to use Shakeout as an opportunity to review tsunami plans and practice evacuating, earthquake shaking is a natural warning that a tsunami may be coming. Whereas taking actions now to strengthen homes, secure items, and store emergency supplies will reduce impacts and speed recovery efforts. And whereas Humboldt County has been a leader in promoting earthquake and tsunami safety in California, and whereas the California Earthquake County Alliance, Country Alliance, sorry, the Redwood Coast Tsunami Work Group, and the California Office of Emergency Services are hosting the Great California Shakeout, a statewide drop, cover, and hold-on drill at 10:17 a.m. on 10/17, which is October 17th, very around the corner. Whereas the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office of Emergency Services will conduct a test of the Humboldt Alert Emergency Notification System by sending a test message to all registered and listed residents and businesses at 10:17 a.m. and on October 17. Now therefore, the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors urge the participation of Humboldt County residents, businesses, and other organizations in the Great California Shakeout. And we've already moved it.
Thank you, Estelle, and thank you, the board, for continuing to be really big supporters. And thank you, all the RCTWP people. You'll be hearing more from them in a little bit.
I'd also like to bring up John Ford and Mr. Wheeler.
Thank you, Chair Bone.
You want me to read this first, or you want to just lay into them?
Go ahead.
All right.
Probably say everything I could say.
These are the, this is one of the guys that shows up early and stays late, because I see him crossing H Street all the time, trying to get there and get back, so. Resolution of the Board of Supervisors. Whereas on October 3, 1995, Michael Wheeler began his career as Planner 1, followed by promotions to Planner 2, Senior Planner within the Planning and Building Department, working in both the current Planning and Long Range Planning divisions. Whereas during his tenure, Michael had a principal role in bringing to completion complex major projects, including the Samoa Town Master Plan, the Town in Scotia subdivision, the Central Estates Plan Unit Development in McKinnonville, and interim uses in coastal-dependent industrial lands. Whereas for 18 years, Michael has managed the county's surface mining program. Whereas in 19, in 2002, Michael prepared a comprehensive set of local land use, stream protection, and grading regulations, implement Humboldt County's commitment to the five-county Samoa Conservation Program. Whereas with Long Range Planning Team, Michael contributed technical elements of the general plan update, including the water resources, energy, mineral, and cultural resource elements, and assisted in preparation of the draft environmental impact report. Whereas Michael has been an invaluable resource to the organization due to his proficiency with knowledge of planning and zoning law, subdivision map act, the Surface Mining and Reclamation Act, and the California Environmental Quality Act. We have a lot of acts. Whereas Michael's no-nonsense approach to carry out his assigned responsibilities and his level-headed approach to problem-solving has been a hallmark of his interactions with the public, applicants, decision-makers, and staff. Michael's sense of humor, coupled with pragmatic streaks and unwavering focus on what is important, has generated many commendations from those he has worked with over his many years of service, including applicants, decision-makers, agency representatives, county staff, and members of the public. Whereas Michael has taken on every challenge presented to him without reservation, it has been a pleasure to work with such a capable and committed professional. Now therefore be resolved that Humboldt County Board of Supervisors and citizens of Humboldt County hereby commend and thank Michael Wheeler for his dedication, service to the citizens of Humboldt County, and wish him a long and prosperous retirement. Signed by the board.
Thank you. Thank you, Board. I really want to also thank the staff of the Planning Department, and you can't do all that stuff on your own, and the people that I work with are very professional, conscientious, and dedicated. And I also want to thank the board. I know I've enjoyed your support in, through all these projects through the years, and so thank you very much.
Okay, you two decide which one to go after first.
So it's really hard to quantify the difference that somebody makes as they work behind the scenes on developing programs, working on projects, shaping things, long before they ever come to public hearings. It requires a lot of work, a lot of long hours, as you mentioned. Michael is one of those people that does show up before it's light oftentimes, and gets a lot of work done in quiet. And while we may not see his face, his fingerprints, and the things that he's touched over the years, and the difference he's made will be monuments to all that he has done, and thank you for acknowledging him.
Board members, I've had the pleasure of working and supervising Michael for the years he's been on board with the county. He's had a remarkable career and has served well the citizens of Humboldt County, and we will greatly miss him in the Planning and Building Department. Things I value and miss the most will be his quiet determination, his focus, his knowledge, his unflappable spirit, and his professionalism. Michael, your retirement is well-deserved, and we appreciate your service. Thank you.
I always have to ask, are we going to suck him back in part-time or anything, just because we're shorthanded?
Or because he misses us?
Our great dilemma right now is finding a senior planner to pick up the major projects that we've got going on. He is leaving a huge hole.
All right. I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Beth?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's interesting how Steve mentioned the quiet determination, because that's what I had written down, and I also added the word steady. I mean, to stick with something as long as the Samoa Town Master Plan took, and we're still going, you know, that was pretty amazing, but he's, Michael just gets the work done, and you barely know you're there. I see him at Safeway every once in a while, though, so I think, you know, unless he's really sneaky, I'll probably still be running into him, and I'll talk to him about the county and how much he's needed.
And we sold 90 houses in Scotia, so that was a good deal, on our tax rolls. Anybody?
I thought it was interesting, the reference to his sense of humor, which is quite dry and understated. I appreciate that a lot.
Don't hawk him up when he's crossing H Street, that makes him mad. Thank you very much for everything, and you are one of the, I spent a lot of time up there, and you just seem to always have your head buried getting done what needs to be done, and obviously, by the proclamation, not the easiest things to do in the world, and you pick up and you do it and get it done, so. And I'm sure you've mentored some of the young ones coming up, so hopefully, some of them pick up the work ethic you have. Thank you. Appreciate everything you've done. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
It's all right. I was gonna just, I never got a chance to thank the folks for the, but we're gonna have a Shakeout presentation, so never mind, you're coming back, so we'll talk.
We're gonna have a tsunami, which actually is after-
Yeah, it's not the Shakeout.
Which always follows the Shakeout, so it's all, it's connected. One can't be without the other, so.
I'll save it for that moment, then it'll be fine.
The yang and the yang are coming. All right. Did you vote aye then?
No, I'm in.
Aye? Aye. Everybody five-oh. And with that now, I'll invite our, Kelly, you want, you've got a PowerPoint? And I pulled this just out of curiosity, because the voting centers are coming to mind. I went to the Dominion presentation, and then I was so just gonna let it go, and then, Carolyn, thank you for your kind letter for the transparency project, and then all of a sudden, that opened up a whole bunch of questions I had. So I just, I'm learning more about voting systems than I ever thought I'd know in my lifetime, and then I was, and then also, the pricing difference and everything, just, so if you could explain.
Sure. Thank you, Chair Bone, and members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm Kelly Sanders, County Clerk, Recorder, Registrar of Voters, and with me today, I have our Elections Manager, Judy Hedgebath. See if I could do this PowerPoint. So just a brief summary of what I'm going to go over today. The Registrar of Voters is required to replace the decertified voting system before March 2020 primary election. We'll be making a recommendation to go with Hart Inner Civic for our new voting system. I have a time, a slide for the budget implementation and where the funding's coming from, and then also a timeline for successful implementation of the new voting system. So back on February 27 of this year, the Secretary of State decertified all voting systems in the state of California that aren't currently certified to the most, to the current California voting standards. Voting systems in California are reaching the end of their lives. They're not as supported by the vendors. They're, we're having difficult finding replacement parts for them. And with all of the, all of the happenings around the elections in 2006 with threats to security, I think the state has taken an important position to move this forward and get everybody on a new system sooner than later. They've also given us, all of the counties, a very generous allocation of funding to help us see us through this process. There are three major companies in California that provide voting systems, and an RFP was sent out to all three of them. One of the criteria in the RFP was that all of the components of the proposed voting system be certified under the current standards. Only one company provided a proposal on a fully certified voting system, and that is Hart Inner Civic, the system that we'll be recommending today. Hart has a seamless solution for importing data from the election management system to populate contests, precincts, districts, and candidate information into Verity Data. It basically imports the framework for the election. The build module allows counting staff to see the ballot layout and easily make changes with a what-you-see-what-you-get ballot views, and it creates a printer-ready ballot image. Central is the in-house scanning unit for the vote-by-mail ballots and provisional ballots that are counted at the elections office. And votes counted and results tabulated and reported on election night and throughout certification process are tabulated on the Verity Count system. Every voter who votes in Humboldt County will vote on a paper ballot, and all of the paper ballots will look identical to one another. Whether you're voting on a vote-by-mail ballot, a precinct ballot, a provisional ballot, or a ballot that's generated by the accessible voting unit, all ballots will look exactly the same and will be able to be read by a human. This is a picture of the ballot marking device that's used by the disabled voters. It's a compact design, easily portable. Voters with visual impairments can listen to an audio component to be able to move their way through the ballot, and there are a variety of tools that are shown on the picture on the lower right that will assist a voter in marking their ballot. The paper ballot that's printed out by the touchwriter is identical to every other ballot in the, in the election, and that's really important, because we have very few people that vote on the accessible units. So if it was to print out a ballot that looked different, at the end of the election, anybody that was in the polling location at the close of the polls as the ballots are being taken out of the ballot box, they would know exactly how a voter voted if only one person came into that polling location and voted on the accessible unit. So it's very important to have an and and be invalid. Did I go by two? Yes, I did. Sorry. Thank you. The Verity Count is where all of the vote-by-mail ballots and provisional ballots will be counted in the elections office. This time, we're recommending two scanning stations. In the past, we've only had one scanning station, so this will increase our production time substantially and also allow us to get out results quicker to the public. The various central workstations are both scanning stations and adjudication stations. And what ballot adjudication is the process of identifying voter intent when there are overvotes or stray marks on ballots. A did, excuse me, a digital image of the ballot is imposed on a screen, and it gives a couple of messages. On the right-hand screen, it's telling you in the first box that this ballot has two overvoted contests on it, and right next to it, it is highlighting those two contests that have the overvote. In the next screen, it brings it in a little closer for you, it shows that the voter marked two choices for a vote for one contest, and it's allowing you to take a look at the ballot and see if you can determine the voter's intent. So in this case, the voter marked two boxes, but they've clearly crossed one out, circled the other, and said, "This is the choice that I want." So we would be able to look at that and determine the voter's intent and mark the ballot in the manner that the voter wanted to vote, rather than that just going through as an overvote. This is also very useful when we have observers in our office, that nice big screen that can observe what we're doing and see how the votes are getting counted. There's also, so we'll have paper ballots, the scanned images, and then there's also audit logs that tell you anytime a ballot has been changed, the date it was changed, and who the operator was that changed it. So there's a full audit log for any changes that are made during the adjudication process. Some additional benefits, Hart's been our vendor since 2006. They were the vendor that provided the accessible units to us when the state requirement was imposed, and in 2009, Humboldt County became a full-on Hart County. So we've had, enjoyed 13 years of excellent customer service and an excellent product. Hart's also very familiar to the voters and the election staff and poll workers, and a lot of that familiarity will be very helpful to us. The ballots are going to continue to look the same as they have in the past. The features of the voting systems, while there have been enhancements and more securities to improve the overall system, there will be a lot of similarities, and it will facilitate in training both election staff and poll workers. So the core attributes to the system remain consistent. As Supervisor Bone brought up previously, Humboldt County is looking into transitioning into vote centers, and one of the questions in the RFP was to ask the vendors to provide us with a transition plan. Currently, we're still doing polling place voting, and to transition into vote centers, we want to know what kind of a transition plan would be in place. If we purchase equipment now, is there the potential to sell back equipment to the vendor, or?
You said transitioning. Aren't six counties have already been through two elections using vote centers now? I think Sacramento, I had the list, but-
That's correct.
So they've already done it?
Sure.
And I know last time we talked, I guess, at your, when you guys have your little meeting, when you guys have your meetings statewide, is there any information coming from those? If it works or if it doesn't work, does it? Because how many polling places do we have?
We have 57 polling locations.
Okay.
Yeah, there's been some good feedback. It's, it's, there's only five counties that have gone to vote centers and conducted two elections so far, but this coming year, there are additional, is it another five, maybe? I think it's about another five counties that are transitioning into the vote center model as well, right down here. So, yeah, so-
I've talked to a few of them, they said it's been, the, there's been, there was enough- They said it's been, there's been, there was an uptick in participation. And then an ease on you going into an election trying to find 300 people to work them all. You can, the numbers come down because I think, isn't it, you need one, one for every 10,000 or 15,000?
Yeah, it's, it's one for every 50,000 voters for the first, what is it, seven days? 10?
It goes out 10 days and then it doubles when it gets to the last five days.
For the last four days. We would need nine.
And then the only other number, what, let's take the last election. What percentage of turnout did we have?
It was about 57%.
And how many of those went to a polling place compared to vote-by-mail?
65% went vote-by-mail.
Right.
So 30, 35% of 57%
Correct.
Actually go to a polling place. Okay.
Right.
All right.
So, yeah. So Hart came up with a, with a plan for us for, they would purchase back X number of units that we wouldn't need if we went to a vote center. There's also the ability for them to convert two different types of equipment, the touchwriter and the ballot-on-demand system. So those can be converted easily for a very minimal price. And they also gave us a timeline of how long we had to, to move this direction. And they would, they would guarantee the amounts good through December of 2021. So it gives, gives us plenty of time to plan and do the transition. Other counties that use the Hart system in California, there are 11 of them, most of them in the Northern California, only one in Southern California, but it's one of the larger counties, Orange County. And they're also present in 15 other states besides California. So available funding, on the left-hand column, it shows the sources of funding that we have available to us. The state has given us $813,000. I've worked with the CAO's office, and we have been able to set aside funding from past years, fiscal years, for the Elections Budgets that haven't been spent, for a total of $419,019. And we still have an allocation from our HAVA 301 money, that's the Help America Vote Act funding, at $162,722. So we have funds available to us of 1.394 million, 741. The purchase of the Hart system, state funding would pay out $655,689.64, which is, it's a three, four, or it's a three-to-one match. So the state pays three, 75%, the county pays 25%. So of the county funding right now, we would be using $218,563.22. The total purchase of the, of the equipment is the bottom figure, 874,252.86. After this purchase, we will still have remaining funding of a little over half a million dollars. And that would certainly help us to enhance any, any of the voting system that we might need in the future and help us transition into the vote center model. This is the timeline that we've been working with since the decertification. Actually, we had started looking into a new voting system prior to the decertification, and we had scheduled demonstrations for February and March. Just a few days after we held our first demonstration, we got the news from the state that they were decertifying the systems in California. So we've been working on kind of a condensed timeframe to, to pull all this off.
Were all systems decertified throughout the whole state?
Just the ones that had not been certified under the most current standards. So there are quite a few counties that have been impacted by this.
Okay.
On July 9th, we issued our RFP, and the deadline to respond to the RFP was August 16th. We're hoping today to get a contract executed with Hart because we have a really condensed timeframe from here forward. In October and November, we expect to accept delivery on the equipment and do what's called acceptance testing. In November, we'll be doing training and a mock election. December, we'll be creating the ballot for the primary election. And then January, February, we'll be poll worker training on the new equipment. So a decision today would help us to, to stay on track with our timeframe. I think, I think if you were to make any other decision other than to go with the Hart system, it would pose a threat to our state funding and also delay implementation of a new funding, or, excuse me, of a new system. Does anybody have any questions? Or?
Supervisor Venable?
So I'm glad you pulled this, Chair Bone. There's a few things it's good to talk about. So I had a question about the paper ballots being identical. So is, can you explain that in terms of, are they going to be printed beforehand, or are they all going to be printed at the polls? Well, obviously, the absentees will be printed beforehand.
All of them will be printed in advance except for the ones from the accessible unit. Those ballots will be printed at the polling location. The, the voter has the opportunity to mark their ballot with a device electronically, and then it prints it out at the polling location.
So, sorry. So you said they'd be identical, will they use the same paper weight and all that?
Yes. Yes, absolutely.
And then, the, that was interesting, the voter, the overvote adjudication. Is that something that we've been able to do in the past?
We have had it since 2009, yes. We've had that technology.
Okay. How often do you have to use it?
Oh, every election. It'll stop on every overvote. It also checks, has us check undervotes. Yeah, write-ins. We can determine whether a write-in is qualified or not. We used to have to hand-sort out the write-in and tally those by hand, but now that we can do it through the adjudication process.
Let's see. So you said that 11 counties are using the Hart Inner Civic. What are the other counties using of the 50?
The other two vendors out there are Dominion and ESNS.
Okay. So I know that we had a presentation from Dominion, and I know that Ms. Cernich gave us her concerns about the transparency aspect of that. Could you tell us a little bit about that?
About the transparency concerns?
With regard to the Dominion?
One of the concerns that they had was that the accessible unit prints out a ballot that looks different than the rest of the ballots. It prints out a ballot that has a QR code on it with the votes, or how the voter voted embedded in the QR code, and then just a summary of the races that the voter voted on. It always prints it out on an eight-and-a-half-by-11 sheet of paper. Most of our ballots are eight-and-a-half-by-14, multiple sheets long, but the ballot from the accessible unit on the Dominion system will always be an eight-and-a-half-by-11 sheet of paper. There's no way for the voter to verify what the QR code says before it gets read by the scanner. And, and there's some concern that there, there might be some ability to tamper with a QR code like that.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for asking some of those questions. You mentioned this one being the only one that's fully certified. My understanding is Dominion is actually waiting for the signature from the Secretary of State. So where is that in the process, or do you, do you know?
The testing is completed, and I know they've had their public comment period, but I've not, we've not received any notification that they're completely certified. Dominion, in their demonstration, showed us a completely certified system. But in the proposal, they included a component, the ballot scanner, that is going through the certification process currently. And our, and our RFP, it stated that you had to be certified, your system, entire system had to be certified by August 21st. So they didn't, they didn't provide, the certified one is an option at all in the proposal.
Well, and it's interesting, I'm sure you talked to all the other clerk recorders at the state when you go, talking to supervisors, we get a very different opinion of, or, you know, 41 counties are using it, and that's usually an indication that Dominion's doing something right. They're not all, yeah, I mean, 20-plus have been added on, or contracts from 2019. So I'm just kind of curious, because for $176,000 more, I suspect there's gotta be a lot of benefits that you're seeing that maybe I'm not understanding when I'm reading between the two proposals. But what did the other counties think that you've talked to? Because there's, it's a little out of, but maybe they're switching.
You're, you're correct that Dominion has the majority of the California counties. Judy Hedgepath and Ben Hirschberger and I were the evaluation panel for the two systems, and we totally vetted both systems. And we felt that the Hart system was the best fit for Humboldt County. Both companies are very well-respected. I, you know.
Okay. I might have more later, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
Supervisor Venable?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I understand it, one of the principal things is they were non-responsive in their bid because they didn't meet the bid requirements in regards to having fully certified systems in their proposal. So, you know, it's an unfortunate thing that that occurred. But when you put out a request for proposals, you've got to adhere to the guidelines that you put out. It's really difficult to somehow amend those who say, "Well, they're getting certified," because then you really have to go back out and rebid the whole thing or, or do something different. So I understand that to be a principal concern. But I also want to say that I think, I've said this before, but I'm gonna say it again, I think Humboldt County's Election Department, you folks, and all the rest of your coworkers, and Carolyn and the folks working in Transparency Project, we have produced the most reliable and trustworthy election process in the state of California. And I honor you all for that. I think it's quite an amazing feat to get to that place. And, you know, it's such an important role that you all play with the public in developing that trust around our system. So I thank you again for that diligence.
Thank you.
Supervisor Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have mentioned this before, and I'll ask the question again, just so we're clear. Our, our board supported Senate Bill 212, which, if it passes, would allow general law counties like ourselves to do instant runoff voting and/or ranked choice voting. And the reason we supported that was because the state chose to move up its, its, uh, primary system to March now. So what that does is it extends, well, extends campaign seasons into the zone of presidential length. And then if, if county officers or county supervisors and/or sheriff or anyone else is unelected in March, they remain in office all the way till the next January, which is a pretty awkward, or could be a very awkward situation. And so there's an option out there that if, if passed by the governor, would allow counties to, to change into this one-and-done sort of operation for a, for a, for a voting system. Does this voting system account for that? And do they have experience with that?
The Hart system does have experience with that. Basically, what they are able to provide us is options on the two different styles of ballots that you'd need for ranked choice voting. So in one case, you would have a series of what appear to be separate races for first choice, a separate race for second choice, et cetera, versus one long list with, instead of, say, one circle to mark for your one candidate, you would instead circle the first-choice circle or the second-choice circle. So two different ways it will support either one of those. At this point in time, Hart will get to a point where if it's a multi-winner race, where we would have to take the information out of the Hart system, take the cast vote records out, and use a separate tabulator to finish the whole process, the whole re-
Redistribution.
Thank you. The reallocation process, where you go in and take, take into account the second choice, the third choice, the fourth choice, however many times you have to do it. So granted, Hart does not get us all the way through to the end, especially on the multi-winner races. But I think that there are going to be options available to us. I mean, a lot of things are gonna have to be defined in the process, which one of those algorithms are gonna be acceptable in the state of California. I heard yesterday that Rank Choice Voting, a nonprofit, has developed a universal tabulator. It's been certified by the EAC, the Election Assistance, Election Assistance Commission. So there are going to be tabulators out there that we'll be able to take advantage of. And we'll have the option of asking Hart to develop a tabulator for us if we need one at the end of that process.
I appreciate that. And, you know, before it comes to someplace like Humboldt County, it would take a while. First, it would have to get signed into law. And then it's a, it's a by-choice, so a county would have to vote by, through its citizens to choose that option of ranked choice and/or instant runoff. So we're a ways away from ever getting that, maybe Humboldt County or any other county. But I want to make sure that the system that we do choose is adaptable to that as we move forward, just, just in case.
Supervisor Venable?
Just on that note, briefly, where did Dominion stand on that item?
From the response that we got, it looks like that they have more built-in. So they have a tabulator built in to their system.
And is the tabulator, because there, there are in some counties that have ranked choice already, I think.
San Francisco.
San Francisco, first of all. So they've, and they're certified and, and operating without glitches there, from what I understand. I just, like I said, I'm finding out more about voting than I'd ever thought. But I remember when they had the presentation up here and the transparency, because the tabu, isn't it just, you can actually get everything you need off the machine from Dominion? But Hart, there's another process for the transparency? Is that, that you have to make copies or clarification? I thought they had a better transparency protocol, but I don't know if it works too. Because I thought some of the transparency people kind of liked what they saw, but I'm, I guess we're gonna hear different now.
Both systems created a digital ballot image, if that's what you're referring to. But I think what the Transparency Project is more concerned with is, is, does the equipment, is it scanning the ballots? Is, are the number of ballots correct? And then, and then, and then after that, the tabulation portion of it. So they want to physically know that the machines are accepting all of the ballots from an election. So they always rescand the ballots after an election.
So, and I'm sure in this process, you talked to other people that are, so we have 11 out of 58 using Hart, and over two-thirds using Dominion, and quite a few have switched in the last few years, from what I understand. Why, why are they switching if, if there's so many advantages? Is it, are they just switching because of the, the difference in price? Or?
That I don't know. But, but factored into our decision is the fact that Dominion didn't present us with a fully certified system. And so we're moving forward, we went to move forward with Hart, who is a fully certified system, and continue on our timeline to be-
And the part that wasn't certified was the add-on?
It's the, they, they switched the ballot scanner on us. The one they demonstrated at the demo is not included in the proposal at all. It's the, the scanner and ballot box that, that is going through their current certification is what they included in the proposal. So it's not certified yet. Just that one component.
So would that be considered a new and improved, that they're getting an advanced?
I haven't seen-
Because I doubt if they'd regress. I mean, I mean, did we ask them?
I haven't seen it. No. I haven't seen the scanner.
Okay. I just, okay.
Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Excuse me, just a follow-up on what Supervisor Wilson brought up and a few others on the ranked choice. So if I'm hearing Judy correct, Dominion already has some of that built-in, but Hart doesn't. Did you say the cost it would be to upgrade Hart? Or did anyone say that? Because I might have missed it in the conversation. I was just curious if we know what that would be, looking forward.
We'd ask Hart how much it would be if we chose to ask Hart to create that tabulator for us. My understanding is the ranked-choice voting nonprofit one could very well be free. And I would, it's a nonprofit. So they're developing this for the sake of elections in the United States.
Okay.
It's a separate company? It's a nonprofit organization?
No, I understand, but nonprofit, there's, okay.
Yeah.
They got to figure out a way to operate somehow.
But, you know, I don't know for sure on that. I would expect any company to, in order to do business in California, to do upgrades as laws change and as things get better defined in the area of ranked choice voting. So, direct answer, I don't know how much it would cost to get this outside tabulator.
All right. And then the other question I was going to have is, it's a comment. I understand the concerns about it not being fully-certified, since that's what was in there, and trying to stick with that. Or did you have, any of you, either of you have conversations with them on the challenge of when that came up? Or did they ask for more time? Or did they send any information? Or is it just, was it a moot point by the time anyone contacted you?
We didn't have any additional discussions after the RFP was submitted.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I would move that we approve the selection of Hart, Inter-Civic, as the vendor for the new election voting system. Move to approve the attached master agreement and authorize the chair of the board to sign the agreement. Move to authorize the registrar of voters or designate to execute any and all amendments and/or change orders to the master agreement, to ratify the request for proposals, and to approve the attached supplemental budget.
For the sake of conversation, I'll second that, and hopefully hear from the public.
Ben moved in second. Mr. Wilson calls for the public comment.
Ken Stowaski, an RFP is an RFP. You have a timeline to meet. Otherwise, you're not in compliance. Maybe the other companies better, but they can't meet your timeline. You have no choice in the matter legally. Really wanted to comment, this is a funded mandate by the state, at least partially funded. I didn't ever think I'd see another funded mandate by the state. Politics are an interesting thing. I really wanted to thank our Elections Department. The train of thought they have here is logical progression, and they were left with no decision. Otherwise, we might not be compliant for an election. How much would that cost us if we did not have an election that we were to have? Boy, can you imagine what the litigation would be on the county for that one? I've always appreciated the staff there. They seem to be extremely efficient. In fact, I think I met Virginia the first time, was at the counter down there in Elections, when I was doing 460s and 700 forms. She didn't have any makeup on that day. I remember that day.
[laughing]
But anyway, the staff down there has always been helpful. That's where I learned where the money comes and goes. And I strongly support you moving forward with this. I don't think you have an option regarding the earlier consent item. You voted on consent, but apparently the money that's coming from this one department upstairs, I would have pulled that one, is going into a non-account. I can't understand why that wasn't pulled off consent with what the comments were given to you by your staff here. And I can't understand why the CEO's office isn't getting ahold of staff to get those answers before the meeting. We all need to work together here. But thanks for what you guys do out there. And it's always a pleasure, their staff. The only thing that this doesn't do for me, it doesn't put the 460s and 700 online. But I like going down and seeing Judy and these people anyway, so that's my excuse.
Hi. My name is Wes Richel. I've lived in McKinleyville for the last 10 years. Just a little bit of my bona fides. Before I retired, I was a distinguished analyst for a company called Gartner, which is about a $2 billion company that makes all of its revenue by advising large companies and governmental agencies on their purchases of IT equipment. My specialty was medical records, which shares a lot of the same concerns with election systems in terms of privacy, security, and accessibility. I have no financial connection with either of the vendors in this race, and I'm speaking for the decision that's proposed here. I got into this because I volunteered with the Transparency Project, and for the last three or four years, I've been doing programming, and I'm now a member of the board for the Transparency Project. I really have three concerns, all of which you've heard before, so I'll try to be less redundant. But the concerns are security, support for the disabled, and privacy. Security is really important now. I mean, it's a time when voters are aware that the threats to security come from very well-funded organizations across the world with very high technology capabilities. So their confidence in the elections is very important to maintain. The thing about security is that you can't absolutely guarantee the security of any system. The best option we have is the certification process, which is a thorough review. And it's a process where if you don't certify at one level of testing, they make changes, come back, and then you have to recertify. It's not, you don't get, you know, 10% this time and 5% the next time until you're done. And a lot of times, it's very difficult to predict how long certification will take. Well, we're almost there. That just means we're going to have another round of testing. It doesn't mean anything else. So I really support the approach that we used here, which is certify by this deadline, or you're not certified. I think that's the only way you can do business. In addition, the privacy issues about the QR code and the single-page ballot for the disabled person has been presented before. I just want to make a special point that, I guess I'm out of time, but-
You are, Wes. I'm sorry. But thank you very much for your time and knowledge.
Okay.
Next.
Pam DeBaldi. So, voting's kind of a big thing for me. And so I just did a quick Google search out here of this Dominion company concerning this barcode thing. And just a couple of quick points. I mean, to back up what's being said by the Elections Department, critics say the Dominion voting system still violates voters' rights because of its barcode process. The new system prints a barcode on the ballot summary card, and the scanner reads that barcode to generate vote tallies. Humans cannot read barcodes and cannot know for whom they are voting when choices are embedded in barcodes. Plaintiffs also argue in the lawsuit that the replacement system is just as much of a risk to cybercriminals as before because of its electronic components. This is a lawsuit that's just been filed this year in the state of Georgia, because this is the voting system that was implemented in their 2019 election. And I don't think I have to remind anybody in this room that Georgia was a state that had a lot of problems with their voting system. And further on in this same, and in other articles, I mean, Texas just voted to not implement Dominion for this exact reason. So while a lot of places have it, I don't know that you can just jump to the conclusion that that means it's the best, especially if we hear it's tied up in all this litigation in various states. It's just worth a little bit more research. I'm confident in the capabilities of our voting here. I've actually had the pleasure of working and volunteering to work on voting days. Man, we are on it, the most secure. So, that's that.
Great. Thank you.
Close public comment. Supervisor Bass?
Yeah, it's interesting. Didn't we have a, weren't we one of the ones that did get the Russian inter, I mean, we had something goofy happen in ours last time, correct?
It was a vendor that got hacked, and there were phishing emails that were sent out from, allegedly from the vendor. And so, but this vendor was one of our vendors. But there was, we never received any of the emails. We got on it right away, and worked with the Secretary of State's Office and the Office of Emergency Services, just to make sure everything was secure. And in the end, we were fine, but-
But it was, even though we currently have a company servicing us, that's something that couldn't have, I mean, Hart couldn't have done anything, that was nothing they had anything to do with, right? They couldn't stop it.
It was VR systems of the vendor.
Yeah, it was just a thought that came to my mind. And I think, going back to the certification, I think from my conversations with the other folks, their impression was they were certified at the time, and what they were doing that's waiting is an upgrade in certification. So I don't really, you know, I'm not an expert in any of that. But I wanted your thoughts on, if you, I don't know if that makes any difference, or if it just keeps continually upgrading, or is that upgrade something they don't need to do? Or is that what they need to do to be considered fully certified?
Are you talking about the scanner in the ballot box that are certification right now?
Yeah, that's just the Dominion proposal not being certified. Because if that is a sticking point, I'm trying to figure out, because they apparently thought they were certified.
Well, they have a system that's certified, and that's the one that they demonstrated to us. But they didn't include that in the proposal. So, I mean, they could have included that in the proposal, and then also stated that they had something else in certification as an option. But that's not what they did. So I don't have the cost figures for anything with the previous, or the currently-certified scanner. I can't do a cost comparison on that. And they didn't meet the deadline for it.
Okay. So, and I, to follow up on that, I asked that same thing. And I got the understanding that they'd, the one they showed us was 5.2, and then when 5.1 got certified, that was going to be a free upgrade. That's what I was told by Dominion. So I just, because I called, and I, so I don't know. And I guess if they screwed up the bid, but I just, you know, and I couldn't help myself. I had to Google Texas and Dominion. And then there's also a thing where the Secretary of State was suing Hart too, because there were some ballot issues. So I think there's always going to be issues with ballots. So I just, I just, you're right. If everybody's doing it, it can't be right. But the majority, there seems to be a, the upgrades, the ranked choice voting, which is going to be very popular, they've already instilled that. They've got a lot of, they have a lot of balls in the basket, and, you know, and a lot of balls in the air, it sounds like. So I just, I don't know. I just, but if, so if we don't approve this today, we can't have an election?
Exactly.
I need, because if that's the case, and we're kind of just here-
Yeah, basically, we do not-
Either you buy your insurance today, or we're going to burn your house down tomorrow. And so then I've got this big issue. Why are we getting it so late? Why didn't we get it a month ago? I'm just-
So basically, if it's not approved today, we do not have a certified system. We will not have a certified system for March.
I think that makes sense.
If we don't move forward.
All right. I hope other departments don't take a hint off of this, bring everything in late, and we don't have a choice. So it's-
And, you know, like I said, we were looking into a voting system prior to the decertification. But once the state decertified, we, you know, we continued our due diligence of having the demos with the vendors, creating the RFP, getting the RFP out. I mean, we've been working on this for months. And now we're to the point where the decision needs to be made, and we need to move forward.
And we'll be bulletproof, because we've made statements that they put a decertified and an unresponsive bid. And if they can prove it's a responsive bid, whereas, is that going to kick us down the road even farther? I mean, that's, maybe that's kind of, we're claiming, and I don't know, we're being told we have to bid for Hart because they're the only responsive bid. And if that's the case of being the only responsive bid, and we jeopardize our election going forward, is what we're being told. So we really actually just wasted a whole bunch of time talking about it, because we only had one choice. But I'm saying, so if we follow up with that choice, and Dominion comes back and says, "We're certified, it is a, it does fill all requirements of the bid that was put out," are we in a, will we be in a, not that we ever get sued, but will we be in a position of having somebody question the process?
We would have to see any particular claim that came in after the process is concluded. The option at this point would be to cancel the current RFP process, to reject all proposals, and then direct staff to go back out to another RFP process. Whether or not there is time for that, that would be up to the Elections Department to determine.
If-
There's not time for that.
I keep hearing, "There's not enough time." So there's just, so even a week to verify what you're saying with everybody that, and having county council to make sure it's a, it is an invalid. I'm just saying, I'm trying to, I'm trying to stop, because we're hearing that, I can't believe that a company that side would give us a false bid or an, you know, uncertified bid that was, didn't qualify. And I just, it happens. I understand. I mean, the cracks and-
It didn't meet the criteria. The criteria was quite clear. All components had to be certified by, August 21st is what we put in our RFP. And the only option for the ballot scanner that they included is currently not certified.
I do understand the board's frustration with wanting to be able to look at these two options. But I want to, again, applaud the work that you've done, because everything's been moved up three months, you know, from June to March. And from what I have seen, and I took your invite to come and meet with you and staff, I think it was about four months ago, something like that, when all of this testing of the equipment from the two different entities was happening, et cetera, I appreciated that opportunity to drill down and understand, you know, what you were all considering, what you were looking at, et cetera. So I appreciate you bringing it to us. I mean, it happens sometimes that things are up against deadlines. But in the contracting world, there's responsive bids and there's non-responsive bids. And what you have is one responsive bid. So on the face of it here today, we really don't have a choice, except to either approve this today or to re-advertise, which throws you into a tizzy with timelines in terms of being ready and certified for March. So frankly, as much as I would like to save some money, I do have concerns about the Dominion platform and the things that have been raised here that are issues. And I'm fully supportive and ready to approve this motion now, so that we can-
All right.
-move on with our business here in the county.
It's, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Apposed. No.
4-1.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. I apologize. We do have a time set for our chair of the State Board of Equalization, Malia Cohen. I really appreciate you being here today. Sorry for the delay. Please. So, as everybody sits around and goes, "What's the State Board of Equalization do?" We hear about it a lot. We deal with them every day.
Don't leave.
This is going to be riveting.
Wonderful presentation.
This is absolutely going to be riveting, so, no.
It really is.
So.
Thank you.
It's all yours, Malia.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for giving me, please, don't go. Okay. We can't say that I didn't try. I'm excited to be here. For those of you that don't know about my background, I'm a former San Francisco supervisor. And I loved being a member of the San Francisco Board of Supervisors. And it's good to see my friends that I know. And you two gentlemen, hopefully I'll get to know you, and we could be friends as well. I'm excited to be here, because I'm making my rounds. I'm here in an official capacity as chair of the State Board of Equalization. And I have a prepared statement here that I'm going to read and ad lib, and then we will entertain whatever questions that you may have. So I thank you very much for providing me an opportunity to come and make a presentation and a brief address to you all today. And of course, I bring warm greetings on behalf of the great state of California and my fellow colleagues on the State Board of Equalization. As many of you are aware, I'm your elected member. Some of you I've met on the campaign trail. I'm your elected member representing District 2, Humboldt County is within the District 2. I also represent 22 other counties. So from Del Norte all the way down to Santa Barbara. And it is no secret, I represent the most beautiful portions of the state of- most beautiful portions of the state of California, coastal counties, we were in Del Norte just yesterday and probably towards the end of, end of the year, we'll be down in Santa Barbara. So this is a little bit of a whirlwind of a tour, but not my first time here to Humboldt. So it's good to be back. I have served in this capacity as Chair of the Board of Equalization for approximately 10 months, I was just sworn in in January, so I'm very much new in this role. I previously, as I mentioned, served as a member of the San Francisco Board of Supervisors where I was also a past Board President. That was like doing hard labor time. So listening to these conversations, I could feel your pain, pain and frustration about time constraints and deadlines and due diligence.
And you had nine supervisors.
No, there was 11.
Was there 11?
11. San Francisco is unique, it's a city and a county, so I had 11 and my magic number was six, I had to get to six votes.
Unique is an understatement.
Yeah, I know. San Francisco is unique in so many ways and it is an understatement, it's, but we'll have, we'll have cocktails and conversation about that another time. But, so I, I've been, again, serving since being sworn in in January 7th of 2019 and since that time, I've been working diligently with my staff members, two of which are here, we've got Regina Evans and John Thiele, Regina's my deputy, my Chief of Staff and John is the Chief Tax Counsel. So I've got good wisdom with me, okay? I got youth and they got wisdom. It's a dynamic team. Dynamic right here, we're, we're winning all up and down the state.
Did you just call your staff old?
No, I didn't, I said wise, I called my staff wise.
I can see it in John, but no.
No, 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 don't be messy Rex, don't get messy now, okay? So, but, but since that time, we've been working diligently to restore the confidence and the trust that, of all Californians in ensuring that this $70 billion, hold your hats folks, $70 billion is how much the property tax system assesses on an annual basis. That is a lot of money. And so it's my job to make sure that we are administering these rules and these policies in a fair, efficient and equitable and of course transparent way. We do so by stabilizing and rebuilding the organization, we are also engaged in a process of modernizing the tax system. So prior to my meeting with you all, I was meeting with Ms. Mari Wilson upstairs getting the lowdown. Now, I won't worry with all those details, but it was like music to my ears, seeing and learning and getting a tour of the, of the offices upstairs. The process, the process that I oversee involves hosting, the process that I'm going about to, to, to learn about different assessor's offices across the state and make, again, just as a reminder, there's 58 counties, 58 assessors. We're hosting informational hearings from, from the state and hearing directly from taxpayers, from assessors, as well as tax practitioners, business owners, members of the Board of Supervisors. Again, to begin, to be a part of our review process of the rules, of the regulations, of the laws, policies and procedures that quite frankly, some of them have not been reviewed in over 20 years. So that's a long time to dust off, to blow off the dust and really dig in on what is an archaic property tax assessment system. So our system is a $70 billion property tax system and it results in about 13 million assessments a year across the entire state. And so that means that the state of California has approximately $6 trillion worth of property that needs to be assessed. That is a lot, very high value for the state of California, which as you know is the fifth largest economy. So it's important that we are in touch with our assessor's offices and give them the tools and the resources so that they can do an efficient job and do their job very well. So this also includes having highly qualified and experienced appraisers and ensuring that we are leveraging 21st century technology and all aspects of our public life. And of course, I've always come to just to make sure that you got a name with a face and to ensure that I'm committed as well as with my colleagues to make sure that we are all partners in this collectively. The Board of Equalization has been around for 140 years, 140 years, and this is the first time in history that you have all four board members, new, newly elected. So the state of California is broken up into different districts, I represent District Two, as I said, 23 counties, approximately 9.9 million people. Other counties, I have a counter, my counterpart that represents kind of the eastern part of the state is a retired Senator Ted Gaines. And down in the southern state, representing Ventura and LA County is Tony Vasquez. And southern part Imperial County, San Diego area is a gentleman named Mike Schaefer. So we are an exciting bunch of people, as you can imagine, me and the boys, and we meet together on a monthly basis and we just talk about property taxes. It's wonderful, you should come join us. It's a wonderful time. The reason why I particularly am interested in making a presentation to this body is because the Board of Supervisors are uniquely qualified in understanding the role, the very intimate role that the assessors, how the assessors and the Board of Supervisors work, because you guys are on the county level. Now, I've been explaining what I do to the members in the legislature and some of them get it and some of them don't get it. And I'm going to continue to work with those that are a little bit slower than the others. But I, as a, as a former supervisor, I think, you know, we come in, we are setting the budget and we depend on our assessors to bring in the revenue, to bring in that money so that we can pay fire services, so we can pay public education. Out of that $70 billion, 35 million of it goes into public education. So there is a direct correlation between anyone that went to public school, I went to public school, so I am very much invested in making sure that we have the resources that we need to ensure that these public school systems are still performing at the maximum capacity. So I will pause here to see if there's any questions or anything that I've left, any stone that I've left unturned. I am particularly interested in spending a lot more time in Humboldt because based on my conversations with your assessor, the issues around cannabis, cannabis businesses, how do we tax, those businesses are still, I like to describe it as we are building the plane, as we are flying it, and so there are many questions that are still out there, particularly in southern Humboldt County where there's a lot of grows. Just a quick caveat, I just want to say that we, the Board of Equalization are expressly charged with the duty of property taxes, so I'm not dealing with sales and use tax at all, that's the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration that's dealing with that element of sales tax. But we are dealing with real business property, real property, property issues. Yes, sir, Mr. Rex Bond.
And just so you know, the reason she's so amped up and everything, I say, I think it comes with District Two because we had Fiona Ma before her.
Yes.
She's now the State Treasurer who was...
Who's amazing.
Always amped up, but...
And prior to Fiona was Betty Yee.
Yeah, and last week we got to meet you both on the same playing field and, over in, and it's fun to watch.
What happens in Lake Tahoe stays in Lake Tahoe.
I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Bass?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm just so glad to see you here today and I'll just even, you know, I appreciate the work you're doing now, but what I appreciate even more is you understand local government.
Yes.
You're the only person that I know ever from this, the Board of Supervisors in San Francisco, who actually probably knew what CSAC was. And you were on our board and you were there and I, I appreciated that and, and I, I think that's one of the reasons why you're so successful and people really appreciate you because you, you know what it's like, but, but you actually get involved in other counties and I just wanted to say I really appreciate that.
Yes.
I enjoy whenever I, I run into you and the fact that you came up here and want to come back again and, you know, yeah, I did meet you in your very first running.
You did.
You're the only one that came up here, I think, too.
And that's why I won.
Yeah, I think so.
That's why I'm aware, that's the moral of the story, ladies and gentlemen, tell your friends and family.
Yeah.
That's how you win. But you know, contrary to what many of my colleagues in San Francisco, we kind of think that we are the end all be all, we actually think we're Northern California. And I actually made the mistake one time, I was up in Del Norte and I said, oh, I'm from Northern California and they laughed at me. They literally laughed in my face and said, honey, you are not from Northern California. They consider, I think, more central. But when you get out of that San Francisco Bay Area bubble, you really get to connect with people and you see how other folks are living. And I got to tell you, there are a lot more things that we have in common than we don't have in common. I mean, I'm, I'm definitely from an urban part of the state and it's part of San Francisco, but homelessness is a real issue that I am seeing every corner that I, I was just in Colusa County last week, homelessness, affordable housing, there are real crises and things that we have in common, opportunity zones. I don't know if Humboldt County has any opportunity zones, but there are approximately 879 in the state of California. We need to be thinking in a forward and I'd say even dare, I say even a progressive way, how these opportunity zones are going to work and making sure that they, that they work for local native folks to Humboldt County, that we're not encouraging gentrification or forces that are going to be pushing people out or further exacerbating cost of living. And so when I'm thinking about property taxes, I'm thinking in a very out of the box way of how that intersection works with opportunity zones. It's, opportunity zones is a piece of federal legislation that was passed bipartisan, okay, I won't talk, okay, I won't, I won't go too partisan in my politics, but bipartisan in 2017 to begin to make business investments in communities that need investment. And so, and again, this is a way that big businesses will, won't have to pay taxes on their capital gains, but they will make that investment in rural communities, urban communities, communities that are hungry for resources. So how does that, what does that look like for property taxes? I don't know, but we are studying it and we are learning a little bit more about it as, as we, as we speak. And so Supervisor Bass was very kind to meet with me when I was a candidate and I had the best time. Also Supervisor Fennel, we did, we did tours, if you remember, of crow houses and of farms and I had the best education when it came to just how businesses conducted. Now, this was prior to Prop 64, so this was all in anticipation of how are we going to tax? It was like the world was falling, there was so much fear and look, here you guys are still standing and doing quite well, I might add, I met with Amy this morning and got a little bit of the lowdown on how much resources are coming in due to the cannabis crops, so I applaud you and I think that this is a county that should be an example to other parts of the county, other parts of the state on how business can be done. All right.
Supervisor Fennel?
Yes. Well, Chair Cohen, I, I want to call you Malia, but Chair Cohen, I'm just really pleased that you're here today and I'm really pleased to hear your sort of more global approach as you talk about a new board and how you're going to maybe revamp the system. So you said you went into various counties and got different points of view from different assessors, what are you picking up on?
Sure, I'm glad you asked. Well, first and foremost, assessors need money, okay, colleagues, supervisors, allocate that money in the budget so that they can begin to do their job, they'll be more efficient about bringing in more revenue into the county.
We never hear that a department needs more money, we never hear that up here.
But you haven't heard it from Malia Cohen on behalf of another, other, so, but you asked and I'm going to tell you the truth. The other thing I'm hearing about technology, I want to make sure that the technology platforms that counties are using, whether they're a big county or a small county, that it's actually working for the taxpayers. And so from my assessment in my conversation this morning, that that seems to be, that this county is in a good place. I'm hearing concerns that we have, we need more appraisers, we need more appraisers that are out there on the ground to make these needed appraisals so that they're, to help work out the backlog. As you know, property gets assessed, people apply, they become an appellant, they apply for the Assessment Appeals Board because they don't, they're in a disagreement, but there's a backlog and we would be able to relax that backlog if we had more people able to appraise and review, and review cases. So that's one of the key things that I've heard and that's whether I'm in Riverside, LA County, Ocean, San Francisco and the Bay Area and Del Norte, I just met up there with supervisors up that way, so it's pretty consistent and those are the two items.
Any differences, any, any arcane laws or regulations that need to be revamped or anything, because we do run into some of these sticky whiggies.
Yes, you're right, and nothing that I'm willing to talk about on the record just yet and this is a public meeting, so I don't want, I'm not, I'm still figuring out and assessing, because what, one person may point out as an archaic rule may not necessarily be one. So we are constantly figuring out what, through a, through a survey process, what, what needs to be touched. I have identified a handful, so yes, the answer to your question is, they are out there, but not quite sure able to reveal, reveal where they are.
Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, it's a pleasure to meet you.
Likewise.
Chair Cohen, and thinking outside the box, I think often people will say that the state of California leads and the country follows, but I like to say that Humboldt County leads and the state follows and I think we're seeing that with our leadership at CSAC, with Chair Bass, as well as our leadership at RCRC, and we also have Supervisor Wilson working with the Local Government Commission, LGC. And so, you know, Humboldt is involved, as you know, at a major level in state affairs and people are paying attention and it's not just because of cannabis, it's because of a lot of different things. So I wanted to take this opportunity to plant a seed with you, we grow big trees here from seed and other things and, you know, it's not all about just bringing in more money from property tax revenue. It's also about figuring out ways for that money to be invested into the community. I know you appreciate that and you've spoken to that with schools and other things. For instance, we have timber production zones, which has a reduced property tax on it because there is a perceived and real benefit from maintaining that forest land in productive activities, whether it's growing trees for lumber or forests for carbon sequestration or it might be water, fish, wildlife and all these other beneficial uses. We also have the Williamson Act, which provides a reduced property tax for ag lands, but the thing about the TPZ and Agland Williamson Act is, basically it just says, keep it in ag, keep it in timber and you'll get a reduced tax. But what if we created a TPZ plus or Williamson plus where we said, if you keep it in ag or timber, you get a reduced property tax, but if we through an annual audit are able to find that you're actually a stewardship landowner and you're using best management practices in managing your forest lands, your ag lands, we're going to allow you to write off the cost of the expenses you made for protecting public trust values of fish, wildlife, soil and things like that. So it's kind of like modeled after the solar tax credits where we said, it'd be really great for people to be putting solar on their roofs and we're going to go ahead and give you a 30 to 50% tax credit to do that. So we may lose a little bit of revenues through those approaches, but what we gain is this preventative practice where people are making investments in stewardship and it can be in an urban setting with stormwater runoff or LED improvements to their property, it could be rainwater collection through storage and forbearance programs and also in rural lands, great opportunity. So as we as a state start moving towards looking for these incentivized programs with audits on an annual basis where we can allow for incentives to stewardship activity, we might have a little bit less property taxes coming in through that process, but if those monies have been invested in jobs and protecting the environment and our water and all those things, we're far ahead of where we would have been. So I'm going to plant that seed with you, I hope to have more conversations with you about that and others and it's certainly things that we're looking at here in our zoning and general land use planning and all those other kinds of things, so just a little thought there for you.
Supervisor Madron, I appreciate you planting that seed and I will take it and, and I am actually in agreement with you. My apologies if I came off as a hawk already to tax, tax, tax everything that I see, but I think you're absolutely right at being a good steward of the land, it's what our number one priority should be and I appreciate you for just acknowledging that and I definitely receive it and I'm in agreement with you. And there are very good examples of, of policy decisions that need to be made that are in balance with the world that we live in. So I am, and not, not disputing anything that you say at all, I think that there, there are some work groups that I'm going to be putting together and I might just recruit you for one of them in particular, when you're talking about the Williamson Act and people opting in, popping out, opting out, without a doubt, it's, it's a choice and I think that's a community discussion, and I don't envy, envy you for having to be in those decisions and sometimes having to make hard, hard discussions. One thing that I definitely wanted to point out was also the example that you made about solars, I think that's a solar panel, I think it's an excellent idea and improvement. There are a handful of tax exemptions that do exist that we do administer and oversee that are just as equally as important to, as well as to the fair collection of property taxes. And one more question I wanted to, one answer that I wanted to give you Supervisor Fennel was that another common theme that I'm hearing from assessors is making sure that we're preserving the integrity of the data. So in, in, what county is that? In Calaveras County, when they were having fires, it came very close to their administration building and so many of the people's tax, property tax records were in jeopardy of being caught on fire. In Imperial County, there was a tech, there was a breach of, of their records, someone hacked into their system. So we are trying to figure out a way, in this, we're in a tsunami plane, we want to make sure that the, our records don't get wet. So there are many different ways that we're trying to figure out, how do we preserve? Because when people are touched by natural disaster, we, our job as government is to help them put their lives back together. help them put their lives back together as soon as possible and they are going to be, they're going to need their records and access and, and have confidence in knowing that their information is confidentially preserved and accurate.
Supervisor Wilson.
Supervisor Wilson.
That's me.
Good to meet you.
Still here. Thanks for coming, appreciate it. I understand you're a ranked choice voting success story.
Well, yes. You've done your homework. I was listening, I was listening to the presentation, I said, oh, these people don't want me to preach on ranked choice voting.
No, okay, we don't have to, I just want to...
But share my thoughts, if you want.
That's okay, and I just wanted to also, I just, you know, I appreciate it when your enthusiasm, when people, you know, wave their, their geek flag high and I appreciate that, you know, when you're, you really bring life to something that a lot of people want to stray away from and as a techno geek myself, I appreciate that in your, in your presentation. So yeah, I, I just want to thank you for, you know, putting out the effort to visit everybody and be around and be available and that was it. If you want to, you know, expound upon...
Well, let me share with you my experience.
Yeah.
And, and you know, I can be very brief. So when I was a first-time candidate running for the Board of Supervisors, it was an open seat and I was one of 22 candidates, one of 22 candidates. And in San Francisco, we had, it wasn't the first time we had implemented ranked choice voting, but it was the first time it actually came into existence. And so in addition to ranked choice voting in San Francisco, we also have public financing. So I was a publicly financed first-time candidate. Now I was one, not one of the youngest, I wasn't the only African-American, I wasn't the only woman, I wasn't the only native San Franciscan. I mean, we struggled for ways to, to begin to, to, to be outstanding. And one of the things that I remember the most is that when I ran for office, on election night, I was like in third place. And when we were campaigning, we developed a strategy to say, listen, if you were supporting person one or two, reminding them that they have a third choice, that they have a third choice candidate. So it did change the dynamic on how campaigning was handled. And I just asked people to be one of their top three choices. And it was a little awkward to be a lady, to be asking a man, hey, can I be your third choice? That's just like, not a natural thing. Everybody wants to be someone's first and only choice. But I would see, and I would see people who had a Tony Hall sign, I'd say, hey, I see you're supporting Tony Hall. These are the areas that we have in common. This is areas where we differ. I'd love to be one of your three candidates. And that strategy worked. We also teamed up, because there is no, there is no runoff, right? Your IRE is instant runoff voting. And so we partnered with one of another candidate, I was, he endorsed me, I endorsed him and we, we got a mail piece out and we, and we won that way, quite honestly, being able to leverage different parts of the district. And again, I was representing about 70,000 people, the southeastern part of San Francisco, home of the new warriors, Chase Center, I just want to put a plug in there. Also the former home of Candlestick. So I was representing communities where English was a second language, where the city's four largest public housing units were housed, where it was the last bastion of home, of African-American homeownership, where one-third of my district spoke Chinese. So it was a really diverse section of San Francisco. So we, our, our message had to be equally diverse and be able to connect on many different levels. So I wasn't just talking to homeowners, I wasn't just talking to renters, I was talking to all of them. And again, the other piece of that is the be able to be publicly financed. So for every dollar that I raised, I had to raise $10,000 from San Franciscans and then from that point, once I met that threshold, every dollar raised was then matched by the city and county of San Francisco. And that went a long way. That went a long way in helping first-time candidates, as a woman of color as well, coming into the public service. And I haven't looked back ever since. And so I, I've learned a lot and I support ranked choice voting. We're not the only country, there are other nations internationally that use ranked choice voting. I think that's an efficient way of voting and assessing a voter's desire and who they should get elected and also cost-effective for not only the candidate, but also the county that is administering the, the election. You save money.
Great, thank you. And again, I know you, she gets to travel on 299 today, you guys.
I do, I do.
She's going over to Trinity County. As we talk about the Williamson Act, it'd be really great if the governor in the next budget would probably give it more than $1,000.
I'll mention that to him.
Because, because it, it's a great program. I'm not sure what Supervisor Madron, where he wants to go with this, but everything else, but the system has worked very well since Supervisor Rice brought it forward in 1970, whatever. And it's, it's a great way for, for these ranches to stay whole and be legacy ranches. So with that, having kind of back, backload it like he has in the past. The ranked choice, I can't wait for the ranked choice Olympics, that's going to really screw everybody up. Well, you kind of came in first.
What happens, people will adapt. Their strategies, campaign strategies will adapt. The way you're used to campaigning is going to change. And you know, you know, you either change or you die.
Yeah.
That's kind of like my experience in life and so if you don't adapt, then you know, life goes on without you.
Life does go on. So with, with, yeah, life does go on, except if you're really old like John and I and it doesn't go on as long, but it just, anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you, Malia, thank you for being, you know, we hope to see you again. We'd love to show you the, and it's kind of nice because you can kind of post today that you actually went to the most beautiful county out of 58 in the whole state.
And I certainly will.
And all you others that are fighting for second, that's good.
Oh, thank you everyone, I appreciate all of your service. Public service is very difficult, so from the clerks to the, to the deputy clerk and to everyone that's making this possible, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna, I may change it up a little bit because the public comment and non-adjunct items, I'm going to hold, I'd like to get to the tsunami presentation brought to us by grassroots organization out of Fields Landing, which is, I've got to attend a couple meetings, but it did, it's, and they're willing to share this with King Salmon and other places, so. And that's fine, we're going to do it right after this. It's all you.
All right. Thank you very much, supervisors. My name is Kathy Moley. I'm a employee at Pacific Watershed Associates. I'm a, one of the early members of the Redwood Coast Tsunami Working Group and I'm a member, I'm a resident of Fields Landing, which as we all know is subject to tsunamis from locally-induced, local earthquakes inducing local tsunamis. We have been working for months now on the Fields Landing tsunami evacuation drill, which is occurring this Saturday at 10 o'clock. As one of the goals of the Redwood Coast Tsunami Working Group is to make tsunami-ready communities throughout our coastal. And I'm going to step back in history just a little bit. This drill that's occurring on Saturday has a 27-year history coming about it and this is because in 1992, we had the Cape Mendocino earthquake series. The first of those earthquakes caused a small tsunami that did occur on the North Coast. Prior to that, our focus was on the big earthquake, when will that big one come? And then we hit ourselves on the head and said, oh, that big earthquake comes with a really big wave. And so in 1995, we started the, this Redwood Coast Tsunami Working Group. The Redwood Coast Tsunami Working Group is a consortium of federal, state, private, residents, the whole gambit. It's everybody working together, everybody who has a stake in the game. And if you live here on the North Coast, you have a stake in the game. And in the past years, we have successfully created tsunami-ready communities, Oryc, Manila, Samoa, King Salmon, there's still a few more on our docket. And when it came up to Fields Landing was one of our points that we knew was at risk, said, okay, let's get this done. And they said, who wants to work on it? And I looked around and, and I was the only one standing there because everyone else stepped back. I was fortunate in having the National Weather Service step up and Ryan's not with us here today because he's gone downstairs, working on the, the fire and wind and potential PG&E shut-offs. We've got the state California Office of Emergency Services, Todd stepped up to be a coworker on this. We have private citizens, Nancy Dean, a former member of the National Weather Service. We have my husband Maurice, who is a resident of Fields Landing. And we have my private consulting firm, who has also stepped up to be a big contributor to this whole project. And the, the biggest point I want to make out of this whole thing is the level of people coming together to work in, on these sorts of projects. We have from the federal level to the state level, to private industries, to the business that has allowed us to meet at their establishment inside the tsunami evacuation zone. You know, everybody's playing their part and pulling together, all the way down to the citizens who are going to practice this drill. And much like the Great California Shakeout, which is now at over eight million people participating on October 17th, their drop, cover and hold-on skills, when you drill it out, it puts it into muscle memory. Then you know what you're doing and you don't have to say, oh my God, what do I do now? You say, I know because I've done this, I've walked the walk. And so that's what we're really encouraging everyone to do with these drills. And I want to take a moment to say what the drill is going to consist of. We've done, we have walked the community, we have invited people to come and get information, the media has been wonderful at pushing this information out. On Saturday morning at 10:00 AM or thereabouts, the siren in Fields Landing will be singly pushed, there will be one siren. If it came from the National Weather Service, all sirens would go off. That's not what we want, this is specific to King Sa, to Fields Landing. But what we want is everybody at 10 o'clock on Saturday to say, huh, am I in a zone that needs to be evacuated, yes or no? If I do need to evacuate, I need to have my bag prepared, what should I put in it if I need to be alone for a few days or self-sufficient? Survive the earthquake and once you've survived the earthquake and you need to evacuate, gather up your stuff, go out the door, if you have a neighbor that you need to check on, take them with you. If you're in an area of high ground, check your supplies, check what you need to check on before the event. Practice your duck cover and hold-on if you like. We will have people at PG&E is a partner on this activity and what they're going to do is staff the high ground at King Salmon. We anticipate the community members of King Salmon may hear the siren, so they can say, huh, I know this is a drill, but I'm going to practice going to high ground today. And they'll go up and go to high ground. The siren will go off. We will have in the community, Humboldt Bay Fire Department will be staged to kind of control traffic as we have on-ramps and off-ramps. We will have the ham operators, ham radio operators of Humboldt County will be on several street corners. We have community service emergency response teams, the CERT teams will also be out there directing traffic and assisting people. Caltrans is opening up a corporation yard that they have, that will be for the drill or staging area. Everyone will go up to that area and collectively group together. That is not, that is above and beyond our high grounds, so, but for the purpose of the drill, we want to bring everyone in, congratulations, you've made it, what worked for you, what didn't work for you, and then kind of move along. There's a, quite likely we will have a presence from the Coast Guards, they may be doing a flyover and doing some aerial imagery, hopefully. We have, CHP has been alerted, the Sheriff's Office, depending on availability, will be alerted. Caltrans on the highways will have special event signs going in and out of town so that you, traffic calming kind of things. And, and then we're going to congratulate everybody for being successfully evacuated and practicing their drill.
And I, Kathy, I appreciate, because I've been to one or two of the meetings and I, they're really nice, they hold them in a really nice place, so everybody, yeah. Well, there's liquor, there's liquor available. But I'm, I'm just saying, Maurice and you have, have stepped up and I've been in contact when I can and can't make meetings. And I, I think, you know, we've listened, you know, we, we hear what little Humboldt with our fire safe councils, our, our shakeout, our tsunamis, all our little offshoots that people that aren't getting paid...
All our little meetings.
To make, to make everybody realize, and we do this, hopefully we'll never have to use it. But when we do, the last thing you want to do is run out of your house and go, what the hell do I do now? You, you get it in your head, head east and up, you know, and there's a place that, that will take me, so.
We, we often get people, they see what happened in Japan, they see what's happened in other areas where places are just decimated. And we don't want to go there with that. We here in Humboldt County and most coastal areas have high ground, there is somewhere to go. Even on the spit, there are high dunes, there are buildings where you can evacuate to high levels. So this is not an insurmountable activity, there is a way out. And if we know what to do, when we need to do it, it, it's all about recovery.
10 years ago when we had our tsunami, I sat up for five hours on top of Fairhaven Power when the whole, the peninsula was evacuated and we were given reports from there, so. Supervisor Fennel?
Well, I want to thank you Kathy, I mean, your enthusiasm here and Maurice as well and everybody else involved because...
And there's a huge team.
Yeah.
So it's not just the Kathy and Maurice.
Yeah, and you know, that, that last phrase you said was really, really important, it's, it's, that cellular memory or whatever. And I remember in the tsunami in Indonesia, there was that one island where people had done the drills or it had, had been part of the folklore and they were not affected half as badly as anybody else. So that was really interesting to me and that is exactly the reason for these drills. It's like a muscle memory, you know exactly what to do right at the time when the tsunami hits.
That was, that was a community where everybody evacuated and survived. There was not one...
And there were thousands of people, their neighbors that were, that lost their lives.
Supervisor Madron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, thank you Kathy and all the team members for all the efforts you're doing to inform us, educate us and get us into practice, really appreciate that. When we say, hopefully it'll never happen, as I understand it, maybe, correct me, and I'm not trying to put fear into people, but the big one, the Cascadia Subduction Event, as I remember it, my neighbor Gary Carver used to say something like, and I want you to provide the correct ones, he would say something like, well, based on the geologic record and apparently his sweetheart, Deborah Carver, also identified in the so-called mythology of local Native American history, it wasn't myths at all, it was actually real stories that they were telling about these events and that, he would say that the records suggest strongly that every 300 to 500 years, we would have one of these events and it had been over 350 years since the last one. Could you clarify, what is the standard on that that we understand?
I'd be happy to and thanks for asking that question.
Sure.
It, Gary used to say, every 300 to 500 years.
Okay.
And we've got physical evidence that said, yes, this does occur, this is not just a folklore. Deborah's work was very key in rooting out those stories, the folklore that the, in Indonesia, when they followed the folklore, because they didn't necessarily have the science behind it, they knew when the ground shook really, really hard to get to high ground and that's what has survived for generations here on the North Coast. Then Gary and some of his partners in crime started doing some more work and finding out information. And they said, okay, it looks like every 300 to 500 years, there's been science conducted since then that has broadened that to every two to seven years. But the 300-year event, the last North Coast event that occurred here has been pretty much pinpointed to 319, almost 20 years from now. And that was because there were, somebody had the bright idea to say, if we have that large of an event here, such as happened in Alaska or in Chile, there's probably a wave that went with this. And our folklore said there was a wave, so they went to the other side of the ocean. They looked all around, there are places, we didn't have written documentation, so we didn't have dates. A lot of people had stories about waves that come in. Japan actually had written language happening at that time and very good records from harbor masters. And they talked about... And they talked about an orphan wave that came in at a particular time, and they were able to document when this wave came in. Japan had very good understanding of tsunamis because they have a lot of earthquakes which cause tsunamis. And what they found was, oh, here's a two-meter wave that has come in. We didn't have an earthquake. We don't know what's going on. But people back in the 1990s started looking back at records all around the Pacific, and they found this orphan wave. They then back-calculated the travel time that it would take in for a wave of that magnitude, and could that wave have come from Alaska? Could it have come from Chile? Could it have come from New Zealand? All these different parameters. And they said, no, it looks like it was a direct hit from us. And so that's how they, based on harbor master records and priest records, that the wave came in on back-calculating, the earthquake happened here, January 26th, 1700.
Thank you.
All right. With that, I will see if there's any public comment on this item? That means you did a really, that means you did a really good job.
Seeing none.
Maurice, Kathy, crew and everything, thanks a lot. See you Saturday.
Thank you very much.
It's a good thing.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Ben Laurie, as always, thanks.
I move we approve the presentation.
Second?
They move second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Thanks. And now I'll go to items pulled from consent. The first, not, items that aren't on, public comments are not on agenda, excuse me. I don't want to do that again. First, person on here is Peter Profant. Morning.
How does this work?
You talk into the microphone? See the microphone?
I don't want to, I want to respect your time. My name is Peter James Profant. I came to Humboldt County in 1979 on a tree planting project down Sprawl Creek in Southern Humboldt. And I'm here...
Can you speak more directly to me?
Come, go, sorry.
That's okay.
My name is Peter James Profant, and I am a resident of Humboldt County nearly 40 years now. I came in the winter of, I came here in the winter of 1979 to plant trees in Southern Humboldt, which are growing very well now. And anyway, I, I'm here out of concern, you know, we two are seeking higher ground, moral ground. And I, I really want to, I'm confused. I, my home was raided on September 19th of this last month, and this is an example. Deputy Franco helped bring this in for us because, yeah. Anyway, it's what's left of part of our door, our front door of our home. It was kicked in. The premises were torn apart. There were checks with my social security number and bank accounts laid out as if to be photographed. And there was remnants of a dead rat at the base of my bed. And I'm confused about who or what that was about. There was no warrant. There was no noticing. And I'm concerned. I'm concerned for rural citizens, taxpayers like myself, living out in the country, having to be subjected to this kind of treatment. And I'll just leave it at that. I, I'm not good at public speaking. I'm, I'm one of those people that would probably rather die than get up here in front of a microphone. But, you know, if you don't change...
You're doing fine.
If you don't change, as was previously said, you may as well die. So I defer now or forfeit my time to my wife, Alexandra.
Thank you. I see that I did not get the allowance of the rest of my husband's public comment, which is a shame. My concern is that over the last five years in this county, I have experienced civil process servers with the Sheriff's Department be put in the way of due process and civil process wherein appeals have been interfered with, property has been seized and stolen without a warrant in Ferndale, California, and now at Wilder Ridge where we live, 8750 Wilder Ridge Road, where our hard work and pioneering efforts with Rich Elliott of Calfire in 2000 paved the way and created a demonstration project for the Good Creeks Clear Roads projects that the MRC now prides themselves on. This is a time when I was pregnant at our property. We had our child there. And on behalf of emergency management, we worked with Calfire and multiple agencies in order to receive a CFIP grant in order to actually create a notice of conformance with multiple agencies in order to proceed with our non-industrial timber management plan, which, under the 2002 Forest Practice Rules and domestic water supply, there are allocations for domestic water supply to allow for an acre per homestead, homesite, on behalf of fire prevention, to allow any gardening not defined ornamental. On September 19th, we were alerted by Peter's tenant that there was a raid going on in this property. There was no warrant left. We followed up on it. We realized that the Humboldt County Sheriff was doing an agency assist on behalf of Fish and Game. We've been trying to get a warrant from Fish and Game. None has been provided. We have learned that they have been weaponized once again by a woman who I will not name because there are criminal acts going on through her, I allege, including felony theft of title where the opinions of value of rural property are being highly undervalued and underassessed to the tune of $1.8 million, which is directly affecting and a causal connection to this homeless problem. If people are not allowed the right to due process to save and protect their home under Article 1, Section 1 of the California Constitution, where we have a duty and right to protect our property, starting with real property, and civil servants are getting in the way of this, you're going to end up with people on the streets. My husband is a senior citizen. I object to this, and I'm going to take however long it takes for me to read this. The due process clause of the Fourth Amendment, 14th Amendment prohibits the imposition of grossly excessive or arbitrary punishments on a tort feeser. The reason is that elementary notions of fairness enshrined in constitutional jurisprudence dictate that a person receive fair notice, not only the conduct that will subject him to punishment, but also the severity of that penalty that a state may impose. United States Code Annotated, Coastal Amendment 14, State Farm Mutual Auto Insurance Company versus Campbell, 123, Report 1513.
All right. Thank you very much.
Before you leave, oh, it's public comment. Go ahead.
I wanted to talk today a little bit about management. So let's call this Management 1A. Some of you have had workers for you before and know how to manage people, I think. Probably Virginia, when she was in the, in the business with the restaurant business, she probably learned you have to be equal with all your employees. Just because someone's a friend, you can't give them all the best tables and show favoritism. I mean, this, this is, this is how it works. You have to treat your employees equally. If you don't do that, well, the employees get irritated. And same with, same with Estelle. I suppose if you, when you were managing a radio station, people, you couldn't give the best spots to somebody and somebody you didn't like come in and do the night shift, you know, that kind of stuff. And same with Rex out there, you know, with jobs out there on the peninsula out there working out at the pulp mill site, you know, people have to be treated equally. And one of the biggest things you do with people is you treat them by how they're compensated financially. That's what they look at most, a lot of them. Of course, promotions is one thing. As soon as you start treating people unequally, you have managerial problems. I mean, that's when people say, hey, I'm going to get even. I'm going to go ahead and pocket, pocket my tips. I'm going to, you know, spend time, whatever it is. So what, an example of treating people unequally was the pay raise that you gave yourselves. Prior to that, and I have, still have angst, and I will always have angst with that 10% pay package, prior to that, the supervisors stayed with the 2% or whatever their, everybody else was getting. So the public perception then, of course, when you give the, the top 1%, these large 10% pay raises, but not everybody else. So, as an employee, you know, they didn't get the chance to have a thousand dollars pay package to go off and, and do something for like a health spa or, or this special thing. They didn't get that. They also didn't get the same level of increase. So it's demoralizing to employees when they're not treated the same as you are. Now, I know it was demoralizing to you, and I had people from the, the diocese say, hey, the electors get paid way more than we do. And, and it was a desire to have parity as far as time you spend and the amount of money you get. But that parity didn't happen because those same people got the same raises and same benefits, so it actually made less parity there. So when, when you're talking management, if your upper management is not understanding how this works with employees, you have problems. And right now in Humboldt County, it's my opinion, because of that action, you have a problem. And I will be discussing that a little bit later on another topic. Thank you for my opportunity to speak on this today for management.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, I will close public comment on non-agenda items. Bring it back to, hi, kids. Updated response to 2018-19 grand jury reports.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Bone and members of the board. My name is Neftali Rubio Mills, and I'm the Senior Administrative Analyst with the County Administrative Office, back to bring edits to the grand jury reports that we brought to you last Tuesday. So as I said, last Tuesday, we presented proposed responses to the civil grand jury reports for 2018 and 19. The grand jury issued five reports total that required responses either from your board or agencies that are under your direction. Three of those responses were approved on October 1st, and today we've returned with your requested updates to the final two. And I'll go over some details from the report titled, Like Home, There's No Place, and Sean will review the misfortunes of Humboldt County. Again, the responses in their entirety are contained within each of your packets. So I'll jump into the first report. So regarding Like Home, There's No Place, which discusses the availability of housing services for low-income and homeless people in the county, staff had made the following changes. The response to Recommendation 5 has been changed from will not be implemented to will be implemented. Additional detail has been provided in this response describing the board's desire to revisit the subject resolution as soon as possible. The second edit is in the response to Recommendation 7, which has been changed from requires further analysis to will be implemented where feasible. That concludes the edits to that report, and I'll pass it over to Sean to discuss the second.
Good morning, Chair and Supervisors. Sean Quincy, Deputy County Administrative Officer with the Humboldt County Administrative Office. Regarding the Misfortunes Report, which discusses the county's accounting practices, staff have made three, three, have updated three responses based on your board's direction. However, before I go over the changes, I feel the need to clarify a point from last week's discussion. At the end of her remarks, the auditor stated that she understood the board's response to be, quote, "a summary, a combination of all the other responses." And this is not the case. The response before your board today and last week is made on behalf of the following agencies. Your board, the County Administrative Office, the Department of Health and Human Services, and only the, and the Department of Public Works. Pursuant to subdivision C of Penal Code, Section 933, the governing body of the public agency mentioned in the grand jury report shall comment to the presiding judge on the reports. The auditor and treasurer tax collector are separately elected officials over whom your board has limited authority. Similar to when grand jury reports are issued and require responses come from outside agencies such as the City of Eureka or City of Arcata or special districts, your board does not summarize their comments. So with that, with that said, staff made the following changes. Regarding the grand jury's finding number three, which stated that the financial reports currently available to the County Administrative Office and auditor are inadequate to produce a balanced budget, the response has been changed from disagree to partially agree. As stated in the original response, the County Administrative Office used the financial system, the county's financial system to produce the financial reports that reflect the adopted budgets, revenues, expenditures, and other financing sources and uses. The reports produced the balanced budget for fiscal year 2019-20 and have done so for many years. The updated response discusses trust funds, which have traditionally not been included in the budget process. The budget is a record of estimated revenues and expenditures, and expenditures should not be made out, directly out of trust funds, and that is the reason why they have not been included in the budget. Fundings should be transferred from a trust fund to a budget unit before funds are spent. However, in order to increase, in order to increase transparency, the County Administrative Office will include the general ledger summary report in future and proposed, future proposed and adopted budgets, and that report is included in your agenda packets today. This report includes the fund balances of all funds in the county treasury, including schools and special districts. Regarding Recommendation 5, which stated that the auditor controller reviewed the payroll system master file change log, this response has been updated to include detail on how the auditor now has access in one solution to see that change log. Regarding Recommendation Number 9, which stated that the CIO should participate in cost allocation training, this response has been updated to, from will be implemented to has been implemented. And additional detail includes a presentation held by the auditor and state controller of an overview in late August of the cost allocation process. So with that, I'm happy to answer your questions.
Ms. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I do appreciate the changes that were made, and I'll start with the no-place like home, or like home, there's no place. Is it were made to Recommendation Number 5, that the board will revisit the enabling resolution for the Housing Trust and Homelessness Solutions Committee to provide clarity as soon as possible. I also appreciate the change that was made to Recommendation Number 7, in talking about further analysis for safe parking areas. So appreciate the work there on the part of staff. In regards to the report on the misfortunes of Humboldt County, I still have a request to modify two of, sorry, three of the items. One of them would be on, let's see, bear with me a second here, on Finding Number 12, where it talks about the auditor controller lacks staff to provide and implement training plans for its employees, and we still have it listed as a disagree. And then we go on to talk about, in particular, funding difficulties, you know, a lack of funding to provide staffing to many departments that have made requests. But we list there, our response is disagree, and I, I actually would prefer to see it say, agree, because that's what we've heard from the department head, is that there is a lack of staff. And I have to trust that the department head knows what's going on in the department better than probably anybody else. So I would actually put, agree, and then with a statement that, but funding may not allow a new position at this time. Because I mean, that's really what it says here is, it doesn't necessarily disagree with the, the need for staffing, but it does talk about the restrictions on funding to be able to pull that off. So that would be one change I would make. A second one would be under Finding 16, where the grand jury stated that there is a high risk of fraud. And I think what's happened is that people are taking difference with the term high risk, and there's a concern about the appearance that might provide to the public. And we have listed as our response, disagree. I would actually put that as partially agree. And I think everybody has agreed that there is some risk out there, and that's why these audits and these independent consultant reviews have occurred, is to try and satisfy what kind of risks are there, how can we correct it? And again, there has been no fraud discovered. The systems seem to be working, but there is room for lots of improvement, and it says that in here. So I would just simply change the response from disagree to partially agree because there is risk out there, without trying to emphasize the high-risk part of it. I think that's where people had the big disagreement, is over the terms of high risk. Then the last one would be in regards to Recommendation 1, where it... Then the last one would be in regards to recommendation one, where it basically says the recommendation has been implemented, I would add to that, and will continue to be implemented, which is the kind of a statement we made on several other recommendations. So, a few minor changes in my mind, maybe they're major for others, but those are some of the feedback that I would have, just a few changes that I would still like to see in regards to this report. And I do appreciate the hard work of staff and the auditor controller and her coworkers in trying to come to this, and it's always a little difficult when you have the grand juries asking for a response directly from the department head under certain items, and then also from the CIO's office on certain items. And in an ideal world, we'd find those would sync up nicely, and I think we're getting pretty close to that. I think there's been great effort made to try and listen to each other's concerns on this and find a compromise that would bring us closer together on, most importantly, making the corrections and moving us forward to an improved system. So, those are my comments.
Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a question when you talk about the staffing item. Was, did, oh, sorry, CIO, did the auditor make a request for more staffing dollars during the budget process this most recent year?
No, there was no request for staffing in the fiscal year nineteen twenty budget process.
Which is actually kind of where it might have fit a little bit better. Thanks.
Sir.
Yeah, that brings me, basically, what Supervisor Madron has done, is reiterated the conversation we had last week. And again, on finding number twelve, my stance on that was basically that that is an item that definitely needs to be looked at in the budgeting process in the coming year. The discussion we had about the high risk, and I had, I had thought the partially agree was a good response, but I remember that Supervisor Wilson said you couldn't partially agree to something that was a definitive statement about high risk. So, I don't know if he wants to talk about that again. And otherwise, I appreciate the edits that staff has made.
Sir.
Well, personally, I'm not too hung up on the semantics of any of these partially agrees or agree. I just have to say, the process is working. The grand jury did their job. Staff, even in the process of going through the grand jury process, started to review and look at systems, both working within the departments as well as with the auditor's office through that process. So, this has been an iterative and ongoing process, and it's not done yet. And quite frankly, it will never be done because of that, these systems are always changing, and you're always looking for the risk of either mismanagement or fraud or mistakes, whatever they may be, because we have a large administrative and bureaucratic system, and that, these are parts of that, and you're working every day, both as a team and in separate departments, to move in that direction. I think that this, that that has happened here. I think it's going to continue to happen. I appreciate the staff working on this. I appreciate the auditor's office working on this. I would say the current auditor did inherit things not of her making, and I think she's trying very hard to adjust for a lot of those things, and we, you know, it is a big ship, and it's hard to turn in drastic amounts, but I do believe that it's, it's, it's changing, and, and those efforts are going to help us move in that direction. So, I'm really, whatever the pleasure of the board is in terms of this partially disagree or whatever it is, I'm okay. Like, I think, no matter what all these suggestions are, we're going to be moving forward with the auditor's office on, on the future, and we should also be happy with the things that have been occurring so far, and I appreciate everyone's effort on that.
I tend to agree because there's, we may, shall, should, I mean, we can, we can probably beat this horse to death. I do want to know that when we were talking, the external audits, that isn't just to satisfy, that is, that is required by the state and federal government because we have an external audit as a general, but then we have numerous external audits because, as you well know, our pass-through monies exceed over two hundred million dollars at DHHS, and they, there are numerous external audits over there. So, I think there's a high risk, something's going to happen every day when you get up because that's just the nature of life. But I, I think some of the statements that I just, and I want, and I appreciate our auditors getting all over this, and you're right, chief, this big ship, we're turning around, had a few leaks in it when she took it over. But I think as we move forward, I think we're in a pretty good shape. We've always had a balanced budget as long as I've been here because I don't think I've ever, we've ever had to have a layoff. So, I really appreciate that, which means I've, I've been very fortunate, as everybody else on the board, I think, pretty much has been fortunate with the balanced budget and no layoffs, and that's what we try to, that's what we always think about every year on budget time, so we can operate fiscally responsible for the citizens we represent. So, I, I don't know, I can partially maybe disagree or agree with you, going on the theme of everything, but I would, I would accept the motion on staff's recommendation. But with that, I will, unless somebody wants to make a motion.
To President Madron.
I would, I would move to approve staff's recommendation with three changes. One on finding twelve, changing disagreed to agree, adding a small statement at the end of that section that would say, "Funding may not allow a new position at this time." On finding sixteen, I would change disagreed to partially agree. On recommendation one, I would add, "and will continue to be implemented." Those are three, three changes.
I would second that if you changed your finding number twelve to partially agree.
I would approve that change.
Maybe kind of partially? No, too much. Without opening up to public.
What about sixteen? That's a partial.
Yep, that was partially agree.
It was already partial.
Public comment, please? Thank you.
My name is Catherine Delabama, and I've been on four of the last grand juries, and I would say really appreciate the opportunity to working with staff and watching the progress that we've made over the years. And there has been progress, and I see that all the time, and I really appreciate that. I disagree with the feeling that the risk for fraud is not high risk. I believe it is very high risk. Now, I'm speaking for myself. I'm not speaking on behalf of the grand jury on the concerns, but just reading the reports and stuff like that, and the information that was in the report, you know, as a citizen, as a taxpayer, I would be concerned. It's true, risk wasn't, or fraud wasn't found, but the risk is there, and it's a high risk. And I'm concerned as a taxpayer that some of these reports that are submitted by the auditors and consultants, some of the recommendations have been repeated over and over and over again, year after year, and nothing has been done. And there's so much there that we just don't know. And to assume that there's not high risk when there's so little that is not known. The procedures are, and the technology that's available is, it's, it's limited, and it's hard for staff to get the information that they need to do their jobs a lot of the times. I really believe that they do the best they can. I know they do the best they can, but there's so many hurdles that they have to go through, and governmental accounting is so complex, even with the human resources running general report that was given. Even that's limited because it was, they simply didn't have the experience in governmental accounting, which is so much more complex than, you know, private business accounting. And because there is just so much that is unknown, I really believe that it is high risk. And I think it's really important, if you're going to pay for these reports.
Thank you.
More should be done to pay attention to them.
All right. Nice seeing you, Ms. Delabama.
I would like to third Steve Madron's motion. Last meeting in Virginia, you said, somebody had said something to you about not seconding a motion for discussion. I have no problem with that. I think that's a totally appropriate thing to do, and I encourage you to go back to that. I don't know who had a problem with that, but it's unwarranted. The risk here is extremely high in Humboldt County. Part of it is you don't have consistent policies, procedures, and protocols amongst all your departments. It makes it very hard for an auditor to audit. If you work on that, I think you're going to find your audit, auditor can provide you the information in the surety that we're not at high, as high risk. Now, I went out and I did my own little audit. I got ahold of some of the people in the departments that I consider to be high risk. Millions of dollars going into planning and building, millions of dollars going to this tax collector's office. High risk, if you have somebody. They seem to have very good procedures and protocols to eliminate or mitigate that risk down to near nothing. On the other hand, when I asked the planning and building if the auditor had been there to give suggestions or do an audit on their process for handling millions of dollars, no. In other words, there is not enough staff there. I want to talk regarding staff. When I first came here, I asked about staff that services you folks. I believe you have one more full-time position than what you had before the downsized and afterwards. It's at least equal, if not one more position. This was talking to prior people who handled the department before most of you were actually on the board to get a history and to verify as far as that service goes. On the other hand, I think you should go back and see what was the highest amount of people you had in the auditor's controller's office. That should be what you're striving before. Technology can help, but you still have a strong need. Now, high risk can be anything from, oh, well, we had a, I don't know if you want to call it fraud, but the misappropriation of money in the HR department when your liability account, and nobody's disputed this with me at all, that that didn't happen. Money was spent on things other than what it was legally able to be spent on or intended to do. When those kind of things are then brought to staff, staff doesn't bring them directly to you to let you know there's a potential problem here. You have a problem, and that's part of the high risk. It's the honesty factor. I mentioned a little while ago about employees. When they're disgruntled with what they're doing, that's when they justify not spending and filling in improper time cards, anything from, well, let's say there's a hundred thousand dollars out on a drug bust, and the guy didn't feel he got the right kind of treatment personality wise. I mean, that stuff can disappear, I guarantee you. So, it is extremely high risk, and you need to change some policies and procedures and protocols. Thank you.
Would you be willing to not limit me to the three minutes so I can give you a...
You're fine. You're an elected official, and I've said before, you can...
Okay, thank you.
Last time, it made it sound like I was disgruntled, and I think you have to understand, when I have a duly elected official up there, I'd never usually, I don't personally put him on the time limit. So, just so you're aware, I'm glad to see you.
Thank you. I didn't want to make assumptions, and I don't want to walk in here like I own the place, so I ask. I am very appreciative to the board for being willing to extend this for a week and take other information into consideration. I heard the discussion, and I would like to address the question you asked about whether or not I submitted a formal request through the most current budget process, and I would like to explain why I did not. The messaging that was sent out to department heads from the County Administrative Office was that no request for staffing would be recommended. If that is the messaging I get in my first round of proposing a budget, I'm going to respect that and not include a request that I assume is going to fall on deaf ears. What I learned subsequent to that is that all department heads have gotten used to that messaging and ignore it, and they still submit their requests. I know that now, and I know that next time, when I am told that no request for staffing are going to be recommended, that I can ignore that and still request it anyway. I've also heard the conversation regarding the high risk of fraud and whether it's high or whether it's partial or completely. And I joined you in the giggles and the jest of it because it is funny that we're still arguing about semantics, but ultimately, this is a very serious issue, and I can't, I can't in good faith just let it go lightly without you knowing exactly why I pushed so hard for that to be a just clear agree. Since I took office in January, I've seen sixteen different situations that I would consider high, high-risk situations. When we did the year-end balancing for petty cash, we found that petty cash has been lost, stolen, accidentally destroyed, and there's unmonitored access to petty cash boxes. About cash equivalents, I learned that departments purchase hundreds of dollars' worth of gift cards, and those go regularly missing. There is no formal tracking of them. Theft. When I addressed the issues of petty cash loss and cash equivalent loss, I learned through happenstance, I suppose, that a former employee who was already suspected of stealing cash managed to also steal two motor pool vehicles. I learned from the IRS that not all tax IDs we get from vendors are legitimate. They, most recently, last week, they sent us this letter that I will give to you and send you all by email, where they say, "Some payees didn't provide a taxpayer ID number or may have given you an incorrect name or taxpayer ID." And now, my office has to begin twenty-four percent backup withholding for these people until we can get corrected tax IDs. There's sixteen of them. Outside bank accounts. I've learned since being in office that there are multiple outside bank accounts being maintained and operated outside of treasurer and auditor controller oversight, and they're also not being recorded on our books. Leasing arrangements. I learned that not all leasing arrangements are being adhered to as agreed, and multiple funds are being used to generate lease payments, except for the ones purposefully set up to do it. Loan programs. There are departments that have been issuing loans as expenditures, and those loan balances have not been recorded on our books. I've also learned that some of those debts have been written off by employees because they believed they weren't going to get paid back. But the board never got the input or the opportunity to say, "No, don't write off the debts." And also, I would agree that writing off the debts is a gift of public funds. The issue in why it's high risk is that these debts were not recorded on our general ledger. They were maintained by departments in specialized software or in Excel spreadsheets. Claims that we sent to the state. I have to certify under penalty of perjury that those amounts are correct. When I started requesting reconciliations of the numbers on the claims to our general ledger, I stopped receiving the claims reconciled. The departments are currently working on reconciling the amounts, but we have not reached a true reconciliation. For the cost plan, I learned that there have been prohibited transfers of money between internal service funds and unauthorized charges to departments. PARS, the pension account, that's not really a pension account, it's a Section one fifteen trust, that account is maintained and operated outside of treasurer and auditor controller oversight. It's not being reconciled on a monthly basis, and it's not recorded on the county's books. I think there's a high risk of fraud when agenda items that come to the board that have a financial impact are not routed to the auditor controller department for review. The CalCard, there's a lot of high-risk of fraud for the CalCard because we're not able to monitor it in real time, and there have been situations of terminated employees continuing to use their CalCard after leaving employment. There's high-risk of fraud in payroll. Most recently, I learned about overpayments for hiring incentives. An employee who was entitled to the three thousand dollar hiring incentive... An employee who was entitled to the $3,000 hiring incentive got paid $12,000 for payrolls in a row. So, $9,000 of that was in error, and the employee was told to pay it back immediately. Earlier today, during consent, I asked that operating revenues and expenditures not occur in trust funds, but instead in a budget unit, and it was approved to let the lease continue and have that operating rental revenue put in a trust fund. Oh, inadequate staffing in the auditor controller department. Whether we agree or not on that, because I don't have an internal audit function, because I don't have auditors, we can't actually go and mitigate the risk of audits. I haven't been able to go, I mean, I'll use planning because that came up. I haven't been able to go to planning and talk to them about cash handling because I don't have any staff to send, and I myself am overburdened. But I have made efforts. I did go to planning to talk about their accounting, so it's not like we're just leaving them all on their own. Sixteen, no monitoring of contracts. As your board learned earlier this year, you had to ratify 10 years' worth of invoices because there was no contract updated or maintained. I share this with you, not because I'm purposely trying to throw someone under the bus. I'm trying to communicate to you why I'm pushing so hard at not just, you know, not covering it up, but not being clear about there is a high risk of fraud. And this is with the current safeguards in place. I think we should agree that there is, take the medicine, and then we start getting better. We implement some controls and a universal message from the board that says how we're supposed to protect cash and how it's not okay to have gift cards not tracked. So, that is what I would like to share with you about the high risk of fraud. In terms of the balanced budget, this was provided to you as an attachment to your agenda item. You'll notice it's not balanced. There's a negative amount. Balance would mean that that is a zero. So, maybe it's a training issue, I don't know, but this is not a balanced budget, and that's all, the point I'm trying to get across is we do not have a balanced budget. In terms of staffing, I would like to...
And I'm not an accountant, and I, you're an accountant, I take it?
Yes.
Right? Okay. I, I think on the budget, because I've asked this question, because it's monies in, monies going out, and a lot of it's federal monies and everything else, we don't get it all at the beginning of the fiscal year, so it's coming in, and so what it does is, what, it creates a balanced budget as we move forward, as we bill for certain things we do to the federal and state agencies like DHHS and stuff, and then that creates a balance. Am I wrong on that, or...
You're not wrong. That's a statement of activities where timing is an issue, and it's adjusted using the matching principle for...
It creates the balance.
But for budgets, they're on the as-of-date approach, similar to the balance sheet. As of a certain day and time, this is what the budget is going to be for, in this case, for the county is for the fiscal year. So, even though you haven't received all the money yet, there's still an account called accounts receivable, where you would demonstrate that you still anticipate to receive it. Similar to money that you owe that you haven't yet paid, that's accounts payable. There's loans receivable, loans payable, notes receivable, notes payable, bonds receivable, bonds payable. Accounting is a perfect puzzle. Every piece fits, and every debit has a credit. There is no reason why a budget should not be imbalanced, and it's actually required of governments through the County Budget Act of 2014.
No, I don't.
Do I go? You're all looking at me, but I don't know what to do.
Keep talking.
Oh.
Unless you're done.
Um...
We can turn it around, but then that defeats its purpose here.
No. The, another attachment was provided to you, and it was an appointment that I canceled or I declined because I said I don't have time or staffing. I think this just proves my point. I don't have staffing. I'm not sure what, what to do with that. And then I've brought for you, and I can give it to Ryan, I don't really know the process, I'm sorry, that shows the, references to what I'm saying. So, the prohibited transfers of cash, I have the backup for it. The outside bank accounts, I can make a report for you and bring all of them on one page. I didn't have enough time. This was published again on Friday at 4:45, and I didn't realize that it wasn't going to have all the changes. And also, I didn't want to start naming departments without actually reaching out to them and making sure they were on the same page. The, I won't go into the topic about payroll because I understand that is a very sensitive topic, but I do, I do still want to express that the board should reconsider. And that item is not, the recommendation is just to revisit it, it's not to change it. I don't think that the current state of the payroll program and how it's being administered through the county is adequate. I don't think we should just keep going the way it is. I think it warrants at least just revisiting. So, thank you. I'll stand here to answer any questions you may have until you tell me thank you and you're done.
Thank, oh, Supervisor Wilson? I have a question. It's a nice list. I mean, good, thank you. We should have those lists all the time. When I, when, when going through that, part of this is, you know, we're talking, again, I mean, we're getting dragged into the semantics of the word "high risk" and "fraud" even itself. And so, a lot of things listed here are mistakes, oversights, even theft. But are those technically actually fraud in and of themselves, or how do we, where do, what is, where do we cross the line into what do you believe as, you know, fraudulent activities and versus these basically corrective measures that may be taken to make sure that things are, you know, tighter and have a more robust backup system?
So, the difference between fraud and error is that error is just a mistake. It wasn't intentional fraud. There's, there has to be a willful intent to mislead or deceive. I'm saying there's a risk because just with petty cash alone, because it isn't being monitored by one person who's in charge, we call that person the petty cash custodian, some boxes are accessible to multiple employees, and any employee can just handwrite, use $20 for pens and put 20, or take $20. That's not an actual receipt for pens. We're not getting the actual receipts. That's what I mean by the risk of fraud. Anyone can just write down that they bought something or, and then call it good. In terms of cash equivalents being stolen, when they're purchased, we're being told that we're going to use these to provide to the public who attend these meetings. But if there's no monitoring, that those gift cards are going to be locked down until that meeting and only open during that meeting, then there's a risk that someone's going to take them at any other time outside of the meeting or use for something other than what they said they were going to buy them for. The tax IDs for vendors. Any vendor can just write down their ID, collect the payment from the county, and then leave. We don't find out about the wrong tax IDs until almost a year and a half later. This letter from the IRS was for the 1099s we submitted for 2018. I did that in January of this fiscal year, and I didn't get this letter until October 4th. There's opportunity there. The outside bank accounts, the fact that they're not recorded on the books and the auditor controller and treasurer don't get to monitor and reconcile them, there's a lot of opportunity for fraud there. Someone...
Just a question. Do you have kind of an order of magnitude of what you think that the potential for fraud related to petty cash and cards are, maybe in a year, an annual, sort of like, what's on the table? What could be lost in terms of petty cash? Like, is it $100, $1,000, $100,000? Where, what's, you know, what's the risk, you know, in terms of, to our budget with regards to the petty cash and cards?
One petty cash box is, of course, immaterial to a $300 million operating budget. But it's, overall, we have over $27,000 in petty cash out right now. So, in terms of financial reporting, it's immaterial. I don't think anyone's going to go to jail for grand larceny over stealing petty cash, but that combined with the 15 other things just shows that there's a lot of need for attention and revisiting.
No one is doubting the idea that there's need for attention and revisiting. That's kind of what this process is. It's not the end-all process, you know, this is, we're going to be here again next year and again and again. We're going to keep moving, right? So, I appreciate that. That's, that part I'm appreciative of. I'm just trying to like, figure out like, how freaked out should I be, you know, in terms of the numbers of this, and I appreciate you, you know, putting some parameters on that for us, and, and, and that's what I, that's what I think is important. And I think the job of auditing these things is also really important as well. So, I'll leave it to other supervisors.
And just out of curiosity, so let's say we decide to take all the petty cash boxes out. How much, so everybody will need a voucher to go buy something, then they'll have to submit a receipt and bring it back? What's, what's the time? Because I know, I think our office has done away with our petty cash because the bureaucracy of it, because we actually got ours stolen one time, I guess, and, and there was a few dollars in it and things like that. But then again, I've been parked out front and had stuff stolen out of my pickup too, so. So, should we just do away with petty cash and then hire more people to monitor the vouchers and for the $20 of pens or the $10 of...
I wouldn't propose getting rid of petty cash. Petty cash itself serves a very useful function.
Understood.
But the county has a...
Smile.
The county has several systems in place to avoid employees having to pay out of pocket or dipping into petty cash. One is the CalCard. I feel like everybody and their mother has a CalCard right now.
I don't, and I've never had one.
Thank you. Please don't get one, because it's just, it's so much work. But what I've seen in these petty cash reimbursements, it's people who have CalCards who are also using the petty cash box. I don't understand the need. I mean, CalCards are 24/7 access, and there's one other department that has the ability to print checks, so it's not like they're completely dependent on auditor controller.
I just, okay. Supervisor Fennel?
Well, I know that this is public comment, but I, that's why I wasn't going to speak, but I just want to say that I'm very glad that you take your job so seriously. I would say that, given the concerns that we had in the past, your job could be a risk for the county. And there have been times when there were management that was questionable, so I'm glad that you take your job seriously. And I, I think that, you know, I recommend that you continue to reach out, work with the other departments, bring your insights and that, and I think that's where, you know, I've seen, I know of incidents that happened with your predecessor that were very concerning. So, yours is a serious job, and I'm glad you take it seriously.
Supervisor Madone?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I want to add some weight to what Supervisor Fennel said. There have been huge problems with past practices, and I think we all recognize that. I, for one, very much appreciate you having brought that to this board back in 2017, you know, when you were starting to be a whistleblower on some of these activities going on in the department. And that's, that's not an easy role, and I think you've taken a lot of heat over the last year and a half for things that were basically happening under past management. I think we've come a long way under your leadership and your attention to detail. I know that that creates a lot of struggles and problems for all of us, departments, et cetera, to make those changes, but they're important to make. I value the work of the grand jury. I think they drilled down in, and, I mean, I would rather that my motion said "agree" on both these rather than partially agree, but I don't think it's worth splitting the hairs. I think the points have been made, and we have a lot of work to do. And rather than worrying about some fear the public may have over us stating that there's a high risk of fraud, the message I want to send to the public is that we recognize that there is a high risk. There have been really bad practices in the past. Some have been corrected. Many more still need correction, and I appreciate the attention to doing that. So, that's the message I want to say, is that we recognize that these risks exist and that we are being attentive to this. We have an auditor controller who has coworkers who are working hard to try and change all this, and that's the message, is that we recognize it's a problem, we're working to fix it. That's how we rebuild confidence in the taxpayers and in our community, is not by dodging the question of what's been going on and worrying about those words of "high risk," but simply acting on it and trying to improve those systems. And we've talked a lot about this issue of staffing. I recognize that you learned a valuable lesson last time in the budget process. And, you know, as I've understood it, there is so much training needs to happen. With limited staff, when people are off at training, now you have an even limiteder staff, and it becomes very difficult to accomplish all the tasks in front of you while you're also trying to get staff into training. So, I look forward to that request come the budget process, and again, thank you for your diligence on all these matters.
I get, I get, that's a Rex word. Don't be taking my vocabulary away from me.
I'm taking the lead from you.
I'm the one that makes stuff up. Supervisor Wilson?
Limitededidididder.
The unlimitedidder.
I just, you know, just going back to, again, we're in an iterative process. You're working hard. You're making changes, and that's, it's valuable. We're going to get there, and you started from, you know, it was, you know, kind of a disaster, and it's been improving all the time. So, I appreciate this, this effort. I appreciate, again, the effort of the grand jury, very much so in this, and the departments. We're all going to be moving forward, so I just want to like, get this going and, and keep coming back, keep pushing. You're doing, you're doing your, what your job is, and I appreciate that very much.
Supervisor Fennel?
Just one other thing, because when I was talking about you doing your job, I mean, you know, we, obviously, any large organization, whether it's a large corporation or a county bureaucracy, there are occasions of fraud, as they used to say when I was a kid, occasions of sin. And there are sometimes people who take advantage of occasions of sin. So, it's a lot about personalities, and I think that having a robust and well-functioning county and department, a lot of your concerns hopefully will be addressed, and you are in a position to do that. So, you know, encourage people to do a good job and move forward in a good way.
I can tell you, from a very large private company, one of their mottos is the checks and balances. Don't make a bad employee out of a good employee. Don't give them the opportunity. And that being said, we've been very fortunate, and maybe I live in a fairyland and have too much faith in our employees and the people that so diligently serve the people of Humboldt County, that I've always thought we've always done a good job, and now I'm finding out that we have possibility or maybe thieves amongst all of us, and I, and I, I kind of like to take my Pollyanna effect and think that we have great employees doing great things for everybody. But the aspect of, it's, if we throw out "high-risk of fraud," it's a better headline than "we're doing a pretty good job, but we need to make changes." And I'm one of these guys that, "We're doing a pretty good job, we need to make changes." And instead of kicking the door in, knocking on it, and asking a department head, says, "Hey, do you think we could fix this?" And, and then what I see with that, we don't have as much animosity, we have, we have more of a, a chance of working together. And it, and it, and so, when I hear of all these deficiencies in all our departments, I'm sitting here going, and I'm looking at these departments and seeing these people every day, and I've got great faith in the planning and building. I've got, because nothing, I mean, with all these investigative reporters and online people and, and things like that, I'm not hearing any of this, and so, we're throwing all of this out there, and I appreciate the wham-bang effect and everything else, but I'm, I'm going to stay on my aspect that I think we have a whole bunch of good employees. I appreciate the grand jury. I'm going to stand by the employees as a whole, and hopefully, as you work along with the department heads, CalCards. But, I mean, and I don't even know what a, I just found out what a CalCard was the other day because I, I know people buy a lot of little things on it and everything else. But you can also limit those CalCards to certain individuals that have them to only be used during business hours. There's limitations you can do on all of these, from what I understand, and for these people that are eight-to-fivers that aren't traveling, that don't need them for travel, maybe we cut them back like that. Maybe we, maybe we need to, maybe we need to sit here, and I haven't seen it yet, maybe we need to have a CalCard working... we need to have a CalCard working thing, finding out who needs them. Because I've been here over seven years, and I've never used one. I've got a visa that I'm wearing out like hell, but, so, and so what I'm thinking is, I like the, "let's get everybody's attention because we have a high risk of fraud," but I, with that, I'd love to see it tempered a little bit with, "I maybe need to sit down with my department heads and says, you know, that $50 cash box that you use for petty cash for pencils, pins, paper clips, or celebratory retirement coffees for everybody," or whatever the case may be. Can we, can we adjust that and give those things, instead of saying, "We have $27,000 that may be missing tomorrow because we can't trust anybody." And again, I'm in that position where I, and your position is to, you know, "the sky is falling" type thing, that this could happen, this could happen, this could happen, and we've had a whole morning of this could happen, tsunamis, earthquakes, could happen, and hopefully, you know, we avoid all that, but I think if we, for my own personal approach, would be maybe working with everybody individually and finding a medium that will work to satisfy your needs and your concerns and the department's concerns without having to bring a whole bunch of extra staff in to worry about vouchering our big pins or anything. So I just, that's my approach, and maybe I'm just, again, I've owned businesses, I've worked for private businesses most of my life, this is my first foray into government, and, so, that's, I just think there'd be a better, and I'm not saying this approach isn't working for you or us or anything else like that, but I think as Supervisor Wilson said, we're going to be here next year and the year after, and the year after, adjusting everything, and I don't know if we can rebuild everything in one meeting or two meetings, so.
I do share your sentiment that employees are the greatest value, the greatest asset this county has. I actually feel very fond of a lot of the employees that I engage with on a day-to-day basis. The burden of this position, though, is to look at the process and look at the numbers, and that's where I have to stay focused, because some of these are challenging to be, have to have a conversation with a department head that I really like, that I want to hang out with, that I want to, you know, take out to lunch. It's difficult for me to put on the auditor hat and talk to that department head about all the ways in which the processes are not working. So please don't feel like I, by any means, don't appreciate employees, it's just the burden of this position, having to be the bad guy in a lot of ways.
I fully agree, and I'm just saying, this is the difference, and I just, I just have to say what I feel, because after going through, you know, a couple elections and everything else, I've never looked at this, as my end, and mine's probably a lot different, even though we have tensions, I've never looked at it as a burden, I've looked at it as an opportunity and a pleasure, and, and the idea to serve the people of Humboldt County. So it's not a burden, it's, it's, it's the job, you know, we all know the parameters when we're elected, we don't realize that we've got to go to every, we work, you know, four events on a Sunday, and we work, you know, but there's a lot of things that we have to do, I don't think that's in the rule, but I never look at it as a burden, I look at it as an opportunity and a privilege to serve the people, because that's what they've elected us to do, and we know what we're getting into, so that's just my difference. I just, I'd like to see, I'd like to see, I love the transparency part of it, but when department heads are hearing all this today, that their petty caches are, you know, and their CalCards and their gift cards, and I think, and get me wrong, most of the gift cards are DHHS, right?
Most of everything's, they're the biggest-
They're half of it, yeah, I understand, but, and they're externally audited on all that, but the reason they use gift cards on a lot of that is they're vouchered, or they're for motels, they're for food, they're limited on what they can use them for, but the other aspect being is, we can't give them checks because a lot of them don't have IDs or the, nobody will cash them, so that's, I think, because we've asked about the gift cards before, so that's a huge elephant that'll probably bring another whole protocol into it, but I do appreciate your concerns, really appreciate the job you're doing, I just, so.
I got distracted when we were all talking, and there's actually one more item. I won't ask that you change what you've written, but I just want to make sure I'm understanding it correctly. It's the, shoot, I don't have it ready, the one about the cost plan. If you find it before me, please help me. Oh, it's for recommendation number nine on page 12. I do appreciate the edit that was made, that the state did, we met in this room, and we did a training on the cost plan, but I want to make sure I'm understanding whether or not the board is approving or condoning this secondary training being hosted tomorrow to which Auditor Controller Department is not invited.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I had a different comment, but I mean, the way I see that is, it's an opportunity, as long as there's a trained, a trainer there that knows their stuff, for people to ask, well, quite frankly, to talk honestly and frankly, and don't take this the wrong way, I think with you being there, it may kind of inhibit people from asking questions. I don't see it as a slight to you, I see it as a way to bring people more together in a comfortable learning environment. I could be wrong, but that's just my thought. But on the other thing, I'm fascinated by the two cars being missing. I have no idea how that would happen, but what I would ask you in the vein of what other people were saying, that, you know, we're going to be here year, years probably, coming back and visiting.
Someone will be.
Yeah, someone, maybe not us, but it would be great if you could even take, like, the items that you have there, and maybe even give, like, six months, they can just send a memo out of what you're seeing, and if you're seeing improvement, and what you're, as we go, because to me, that would be really helpful for me, and I think it'd be helpful for employees, and probably also helpful somewhat to the public, so. But we have to still hear from the public, right? Have we had public comment?
I see Ken's still sitting there.
We're right in the middle of all this.
Forgot there was a whole thing behind me, sorry. I do appreciate-
I'm going to really rethink not giving you more than three minutes, so, anyway.
But I do want to say that this trainer that's been hired is not endorsed by the state, is not partnered with the state, I don't know who's vetted them. As far as I know, MRG is a group of consultants, and every county's cost plan is specific to that county, and each one requires experts in that cost plan for the county. Given that the cost plan has so many mistakes in it, I really don't think having a cost plan training where auditor controller is not invited, I don't need to be the one to be there, but it can be a person on staff who maybe doesn't hold a management title, I don't really know. But I worry that, given all the mistakes and errors on the cost plan, that a training is being set up without auditor controller input, oversight, or participation by an agency that is not licensed to give such a training.
Do they, do they license consultants?
The state controller can, if you submit to several of their trainings, they can potentially give you some kind of endorsement to provide the training on your own. They have not done that for this agency.
I don't know who's doing the training, but they might have been actually thinking of your staff shortages and not want to put a burden on you to deny your staff, I don't know, I'm just taking a guess. That's an option. We're talking about options, I thought I'd throw one in there. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, I'm going to walk away. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Good morning, Your Honorable Board, and CAO, and, as we call you in the office, Smiles, for all the smiles you bring to our office and how much you've been helping us. My name is Amanda Cherry, I am an accountant auditor one in the auditor controller's office, and if I may, I'm coming to speak on the recommendations for the grand jury's finding of number 12 for staffing for the auditor controller's office. Year-end is always a fun process for any accounting agency firm or government organization, and myself and my coworkers, who are other accountants, not management level, in the auditor controller's office have had a lot of fun for year-end. We've also spent a lot of time, and as I know that some of you are, we've had conversations about being family people. I myself have a young baby who's four months old, and a five-year-old at home, and a husband who's in college right now. And so being family people and spending so much time approximately for the month of September, I have spent an additional, over my 40 hours per week, in September alone, I spent 69 hours of additional time to work on the year-end process, as well as my coworkers, the senior accountants, and the other accountant auditor ones and twos in our office, and I just celebrate working for the county and continuing to advance my understanding of government accounting, so I thank you for this opportunity to be here and work for the county. I would like to say, too, I'm always excited to work with more members of our team and to have more persons standing beside me who can continue to practice professional skepticism and go forward with auditing every transaction to the detail as required by GAAP and GASB to the governmental accounting standards, and GAGIS, of course, for auditing standards in governmental accounting, and to just continue to give the county everything that they deserve as the ones who are helping to act as watchdogs. So thank you for this baby watchdog pup, for my opportunity to speak today, and I appreciate all of your hard work to add the recommendations for the auditor controller staffing, as it sounds like we're bouncing between saying yay and then, like, kind of yay.
Great.
Thank you very much for my time.
Thank you.
Honorable Board, my name is James Hussey. I am a lifelong resident of Humboldt County. I have worked for the county for 11 years in multiple positions, including purchasing. I've also spent some time in revenue recovery and also helped prepare some budgets with the CAO office. I've spent the last six years working in the auditor controller's office. I have now reached the position of Senior Auditor Controller, and I wanted to come and speak with you regarding our staffing issues and also the question of risk and the high-risk finding as well. I heard the sentiment, I'm not sure if it was repeated this meeting, but in the last meeting, that several departments have staffing shortages, and this is completely understandable. Things haven't quite picked up as much as we had hoped since 2007, but the question is, when you're running into a situation where you're trying to tighten the belt and being fiscally responsible, the last department that you want to make sure that is going to be understaffed is the department whose job it is to make sure that money is being spent responsibly. So even though some departments might also need staffing, to make sure that that, the money being spent in those departments is being spent correctly, you need to make sure that the auditor controller staff is fully staffed first. And as far as the risk is concerned, I like to use a very simple analogy, it might be too simple, but I like to use the analogy of, like, you live in a really good neighborhood and you trust your neighbors, so you decide you want to leave your door unlocked. Now, that might not be a problem for you, but there is still a risk, and that's the problem. It's that the risk is there, not that we don't trust our employees, but a risk exists, and the risk must be taken care of. So that is why I would like to recommend that for finding 12 and for finding 16, you change your recommendation to fully agree for both. Thank you for your time.
I'm getting really confused, because this morning I heard that the most important department is the assessor, because they actually get us the money that, so. He can have as long, he's a duly-elected official, he can take 35 minutes if he wants.
Chair Bone, fellow supervisors and staff, I'm sorry I wasn't here last week, but I was actually at a conference fulfilling my continuing education requirements for my position, and I'm here today to clarify my answer to the grand jury about the high-risk question, and in it, I agreed, because to the best of my knowledge, there always is risk, and if you don't mitigate that risk as much as possible, then you're not really adequately addressing the concern. And so my agreement with that finding was not because of the people who work for Humboldt County. It was great, honest people, and I believe that all staff are working in unison to do the right thing for the county and the public. But we do not have a uniform control procedure for cash handling across all departments, so there is no system of checks and balances that is common to all departments, and that is not right. That's what we need to address in this case, to reduce the risk that the county is assuming. So therefore, what I recommend be done is that a focus group be established within the HUM 21 endeavor, whereby we put the people, the personnel together that are dealing with cash handling across all county departments, and develop control procedures that we all agree upon and that we will all follow. And we would start by reviewing current departmental cash handling procedures across all departments and figure out, okay, what's working, what, where are the weak points in the system, the various systems, and then come up with a agreed-upon procedural method, a system of having proper controls. And of course, the auditor's office will be part of this group, and we will use their guidance and their education for making sure that all staff are on the same page. We can come up with a consensus cash handling procedures, and then we will mitigate a significant amount of the risk that is currently out there within county operations. I feel very strongly that this could be done, and so I, is there a high-risk potential? Sure, there's always high-risk potential, it's just a matter of addressing, how can you reduce that risk? And I think that by putting this group together, we can really reduce the overall risk within the county operations.
Just, just before we have another group doing this, you guys have a department head meeting every, how often do you meet as department heads?
Once a month.
Once a month, so 12 times a year. Could you, actually, since the people that are going to have to implement it, accept it, and oversee it are all in that meeting, wouldn't it be best to ask the department heads, because if we get people underneath them, then they're going to be telling the department heads what to do, and you guys probably have a pretty good understanding, and then it could be explained to everybody that we're not reinventing the wheel, we're making it easier for everybody? Would, so, or is that an unfeasible ask to have the department heads agree on something, and then maybe they could all appoint somebody from their department to implement, but, so we start at the top, because that's, who has to deal with it? Do you think, would that work?
I appreciate that sentiment, but just like the HUM 21 endeavor espouses, to develop leadership at all levels and use the expertise that exists at all levels to enhance county operations, and no offense to any department head, but department heads have oversight responsibilities of everything that's going on with their department, so they cannot, and I readily admit this, we cannot have the same expertise as our staff members that have exclusive or secondary responsibility for specific tasks throughout our operations. And so I would recommend that what happens is that a group of staff members that are responsible for the cash handling within the departments bring their cash handling procedures together as a group, and we'll, and let those expertise, let those experts talk about the difficulties within the system, and then, once a procedural system for cash handling has been recommended by this group, it be taken to the department heads and then distributed accordingly from that point. I can see you have a question.
Well, it's not that, what I'm saying is, is I fully agree, I'm not trying to put you guys in a meeting going, you know, how do we, who do we give CalCards to or anything else, but I think as the department head, either being elected or, elected or selected, the majority of the department knowledge should be resting on you. What I'm saying is, could this come up at one of your meetings, and you guys appoint somebody to, because, or is all your departments going to have meetings- or is all your departments gonna have meetings to see who goes to this meeting, whereas you guys, the department heads probably have the most knowledge of who handles the most cash, who directly handles the, who do you go to and says, who do we, we need to get a check? So that person, so you are directing that person to be the focus group and then we have somebody from each department that you guys know have a full understanding of your, of your cash handling and then they can come together and come to a consensus. That's all I'm going for. I'm not saying you guys should handle it as department heads.
Absolutely. I agree with you in that the department heads will be directly involved to designate and approve the individuals that will be working with this group to work out the procedures and they will agree to what that system of checks and balances is once they have been developed by the group and agreed upon and blessed by the auditors' department as to them meeting all requirements for proper checks and balances within that cash handling system.
John, forgive me if I sound too simplistic, but it seems like it's not a huge deal to figure out how to handle cash and just make it uniform procedure. It really doesn't sound like it's gonna take a big committee or anything like that. And that's where I think just settling with the department heads or whoever, what is it we want to do and just do it. I mean, I don't think it's rocket science.
No, it's not rocket science and I agree with you, but I feel very strongly that the staff members that are involved in the processes and procedures of cash handling-
Yeah, yeah.
Be the ones that, that talk about, okay, what's working, what's not, where are the weak points, so that you seal the holes in the system countywide for any potential fraud and thereby reduce the risk. And it's not just cash handling. Electronic money transfers, check handling, emails, you know, there is all kinds of cybersecurity issues that can be discussed regarding the money handling and transactions that take place in the county. We are reconciling roughly $5 million a day in our office for banking operations. So, this is, there's a lot of money flowing through the county and I just think that a group that would address anything that has to do with money or cash handling or transfers or transactions or wires or ACHs or what have you, be, have a group that we can talk about these things and make sure everyone's on the same page. IT department, now Tom is a great IT security guy and he could be integral within this group to make sure that everyone involved in handling or transacting money within each department is aware of different security risks from the, on the cyber side. So it's not just cash handling. There's all kinds of peripheral areas of risk having to do with money.
So, is this something that we give you direction on or is this something that it's so obviously in front of you that you guys as department heads will implement and make happen and choose the proper person? I'm sure that our CAO, since the IT department's underneath her, I'm sure she would probably pick, for the, I'm, hopefully, somebody will pick the right person that is integrally involved with the money handling, so everybody, and then the other thing is, like I always say, since there's 58 counties, look around for a county our same size and says, what have you guys implemented and what works for you, so we're not reinventing the wheel?
I'm a huge proponent of not recreating the wheel, so that would be part of the process, so that we have comparative operations to make sure that we are addressing all the checks and balances that other counties are using in cash handling and in any transactions that we have, that we're doing on a daily basis. So, I think this is something that can be fixed. Mrs. Del Obama had some great comments, I appreciate her concerns, but again, it's not about the people, it's just getting the right checks and balances in place across the departments so that we're all on the same page and that so, when the auditor can go in and audit a department for their cash handling or whatever their issue is, that it's plain to see where there may have been a problem or maybe where there is a problem or maybe where they're not following the checks and balances, the procedures that have been put into place.
Perfect. Thank you.
Make it so.
Oh, all right. With that, do you want to reread the motion, Marianne? That's, would you have them reread it? I hate to ask Sean questions because it's lost. No.
So, I have change finding 12, just a second.
Change finding 12 to partially agree, but funding may not allow for a position at this time. Change finding 16 to partially agree and then recommendation one, this recommendation has been implemented and will continue to be implemented.
Mr. Chair? Senator Madam.
Yeah, that is the motion as I made it and amended it with the second or, I'd actually, I mean, from everything I've heard here, I will restate my opinion that I believe these ought to both be changed to agree. I don't really see that it creates any problems and I'm just curious, I thought maybe I'd do a straw, straw vote, just to see if there was support, if there was three votes or more support for changing both of these to agree. Is there through a straw vote, that support there? Is there a second and/or third vote that we might go back to the agree rather than partially agree? Looking at my colleagues, it's just a straw vote?
I don't know if you get to call for a straw vote. I think that comes from me, right? But-
Just trying to quickly get to an end here and see where the support's at.
As the second or, I think that this seems like a pretty decent compromise moving forward between departments and we don't have to have everything succinctly agree. These are opinions of various things and I don't think it's gonna make a difference on the-
Outcomes.
On the outcomes, which is the dedication of everybody to move these things forward, including, and I heard from, from the auditor staff in terms of, you know, their concern with regards to their workloads and I hear it. I don't want to, I don't belittle that at all. I think that is very significant and we need to, you know, take that into account when we do our budgeting coming up. I think that's really important. I think we've heard also from, from department heads on these issues as well and we've heard from our staff and I think that everyone is taking these things very seriously. I think we're gonna try not to leave the door open as much as possible and I believe that the staff, the auditor's office is doing an amazing job and they're overworked and we need to address that, but at the same time, make the systems as functional and as efficient as possible to make them not have to work as much and give them the help. So, see what we can do and I appreciate that effort very much.
Yeah, and I just, and to that, I think we as a board made adjustments to the auditor's controllers, it came up with office furniture, but I think we also rewired, I think the quote was, if we got rewired and upgraded our system and our computers, it would save you in excess of 40 hours a week of staff time, I think was the statement made. And so, I, but we've made those, we made those expenditures trying to help out as much as possible. And again, through all the departments, I have yet to hear a department say, I've got enough people, do you want one of them? So, I, we're all overworked. I mean, except for us, we're just overpaid and underworked, but.
And I just want to add that this conversation today went way deeper than I had anticipated.
Yeah.
And, but I, and actually, there's a lot of value in it and I really appreciate that and that's because of the hard work and, can you hear me back there, of the auditor's office and all the staff. So I appreciate that.
Let's move to the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you.
I think that's that closed session.
He's even got a new name, Smiles, it's up to you.
Thank you, Chair Bone. It is the intent of the board of supervisors to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Sections 54-954.5 and 54-957 in order to consider the public employee performance evaluations for the county administrative officer, planning and building director, human resources director, and public defender positions. It is also the intent of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54-956.9D4 in order to discuss with legal counsel the possibility of initiating litigation in one potential case.
With that, thank you. I'll open up to public comment.
Kent Sowalski, I started talking a little bit about management before and a good manager uses all the tools in their tool belt, all the arrows in their quiver to accomplish their job. It's so much easier to work with qualified people rather than circumvent the process. Regarding your CEO, Amy Nielsen, she was thrown into this, this thing with, I don't know if she'd managed any more than five people in her apartment before she took this job. It's a very fast learning curve. Unfortunately, when you can't use those tools to your best ability, you're not able to do your job. And if you're fighting with the auditor controller and you want your own auditor, so you can say, I've been audited, the firewalls are not there. I mean, it was quite obvious that this position of auditor controller and tax collector were to be combined, went to the voters and their wisdom, they said no, and that was to be put under Amy's discretion there. I'm gonna go back historically. February 2nd, I believe, I think it was in 14, Philip Smith Haynes was there, Amy was here. I asked a question, where did the $465,000 go that I'd gotten from, think Virginia asked staff what is, Amy said it got swallowed up by Pers. You didn't even know, I mean, these are ethics, you didn't even know that money was available. I see the same thing continuing. So here's, here's the assessment you need to make of Amy. Can you trust her? Number one. Either I've been misinformed or the court documents are wrong, a whistleblower's complaint was brought to her in October, November. Did she immediately notify you folks? If she didn't, you can't trust her. If she did notify you of the whistleblower's complaint, you didn't do anything, then you're complicit to that problem. Trust is the biggest thing you have to have in your staff and for something like this to be buried and asked to be brought back in March, as it was brought back in March, is unforgivable. I look upon this the same thing as an unfaceful spouse. There are certain things you cannot forgive, or you can, but that's your decision, I guess. Until such time as you, I feel it's time to make a change, I feel it's time to replace. My understanding was there was even budgetary things, didn't reach out to the staff and I think you were $7 million off because you had a double entry as far as your budget goes. These are not small things and somebody needs to be able to be accountable and be able to handle those. There are other people out there, highly recommend that you consider looking for that. I'd love to have Cheryl back, I loved her laugh and she had the skill set and the honesty that I didn't feel where she would be having things swallowed up by Pers without you guys knowing that you had $465,000 of windfall. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, that's my suggestion today.
Great, thank you. And we will go into closed session. Can we go immediately, you guys, or five minutes? All right, 12:30, sharp, we're starting. All right, we're back from closed session. County Council, Smiles?
The following actions are reported out of the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors' closed session meeting as to closed session item number five. Today, the Board of Supervisors approved two agreements which arise out of the county's termination for default of the original construction contract for the juvenile hall replacement facility project with Hal Hayes Construction Incorporated in November of 2018 and the county's claims against Western Surety Company, the project's performance bond surety. These agreements will allow construction work at the project to resume immediately. The first agreement is a takeover agreement between the county and Western Surety. Among other provisions, the takeover agreement requires Western Surety to complete the project by August 30th, 2020 and confirms that Western will be responsible for costs to complete the project in excess of the remaining contract balance. The takeover agreement also provides for the payment of damages to the county for certain delays due to the termination of the project contract. The second agreement is a waiver and release agreement between the county and Hal Hayes Construction Incorporated that is related to the takeover agreement. The waiver and release agreement resolves claims and issues as between the county and Hal Hayes Construction, Inc., subject to certain exceptions. Complete copies of both the takeover agreement and the waiver and release agreement will be made available for review and inspection upon request. There was no reportable action taken with regard to closed session item numbers one through four.
And before we adjourn, I want to thank county council and their staff for all their work on this very trying and difficult situation at the juvenile hall that has come to a situation where it doesn't, there's no increase in the taxpayers' expense on this and we will have a completed juvenile hall hopefully by August, or there are penalties if it's not done by the end of August. Right?
Yes, that is so.
Yep, great, thank you. And with that, I will adjourn and thank you again.